Sense of experience in federal contract in grant management. Terry most recently has worked with the cities of Brea and Monterey Park. Terry is a longtime resident of Southern California. He enjoys the outdoors and an active lifestyle. So I would like to uh welcome him to the city of South Pasadena.
There anything you'd like to say to us?
Um, well, I think he did a good job. Interesting that um I've been listening to finance committee meeting through my commit. The YouTube, so I've been listening. I don't bet you. So finally, it's nice to see you in person. Um, I admire your passion. Um, I'm really looking forward to working for you guys and I'm just happy to be here.
Yeah, thank you very much. We're looking forward to working with you and I wish I could have said after my first four thirty. Twenty-three years of working, that I looked as young as you do. I really do. Okay, John, good job. So welcome. We we look forward to working with you. Uh, another.
Yes, so the second person I'd like to introduce is Yana Pedron. So um uh she is our new accountant and she has over twenty years of uh years of experience of accounting and finance. She has a bachelor's degree in accounting and she has a master's in business administration. She's worked with uh the cities of Alhambra, Sierra Madre, and most recently the city of Glendale. Uh at Glendale, uh she was responsible for uh working with payroll. So just to give you a context, Glendale has two thousand fifty employees. So uh yeah, so meeting those deadlines. Um on there. Um she is a resident of Pasadena. She enjoys hiking, biking, and she loves the arts. So I'd like for you uh like I'm pleased to welcome her to the city of South Pasadena as well.
We're very happy to have you. If we ever get to two thousand employees, that's when I'm leaving. I assure you, um you have managed to hire folks who are well experienced but still look still look young. It's all it's all about that, John.
Yes.
We'll we'll change that in about a year. We will. Uh, welcome.
Whereas for me, I hate the Mike Pence look.
Exactly, yeah, okay. Oh, my goodness. Well, welcome. Uh you're here for uh your first meeting is going to be an interesting one. Um we have two of our commissioners who uh. Uh got together and did a so a form of subcommittee, did a subcommittee report for us. That material is was posted late today. Am I correct, John?
Well, um we we had two postings. Uh we had one posting on Monday.
Which was the.
I think it was Tuesday, uh and then we had one posting today.
Which is the full.
It which is the full report.
Okay, then. Um so some of you may not have had a chance to read the entire report. Um I have it uh it's interesting reading and uh. Uh it reflects the in intellect and the the dedication of the two people who worked on it. So with that, I'm going to turn that over to um. Uh Sheila Rossi, Commissioner Rossi and Commissioner Finley, and ask them to uh take us through the executive summary, take us through. What we should be thinking about and concentrating on. And I one of the things I would like to point out to everybody. Most of the things that you um talk about in your report predate. Most of the staff here, okay? So staff, take a deep breath. Next year, this will be about you, okay? But this year, it's not. So I'll turn that over.
All right. I'd like to begin with the uh executive summary. We have a recommendation. Establish and maintain a cash reserve. In accounting with a policy of minimum. Of seventy percent per year. Seventy percent of the net present value and the actuarial report. To a to a total self-insured work uh workers' cost insurance and general liability insurance. Through the transfer of funds from the general fund to the insurance fund. Establish the internal controls and policies. For the foregoing management of the insurance fund claims. Liability reserve balance and risk management activities. Financial impact. The financial impact is isolated to the accounting of the general fund unreserved balance. The general general fund projected unassigned balances for June twenty twenty-four. Was reported as eighteen million, four hundred seventy-eight thousand, hundred forty-five dollars on September twenty-eight, twenty-three. The expected present value of the liabilities as forecasted by actuarial reports is two million, seven hundred twenty-three thousand. A seventy percent minimum reserve balance equates to one million, nine oh six, four hundred. Assuming current cash reserves. Worst-case scenario, this would equal a transfer of a commitment from the general fund. Resulting in a general fund unassigned balance of eighteen million, six hundred forty-eight dollars and seventy and seven hundred seventy-seven dollars. Eight and a forty-two percent reserve of the thirty-nine point six million dollars of projected general fund revenues. For the fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. Any existing cash assets in the fund would result in a reduction of the recommended transfer amount. Background. The twenty twenty audit reported an actuarial self-insured liability of one million, seven hundred thirty-six thousand dollars. And a cash reserve balance, a hundred and seventy-two thousand, seventy-six dollars. Ten percent of liabilities. The city recognized that it was in non-compliance with its risk management policy goal to maintain. A minimum of seventy percent reserve for the fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty-four. And it plans to receive achieve the funding goal within the next three years. Due to the increases in insurance claims over the past three years, the insurance fund had a deficit balances of. One million, seven twenty-four thousand, nine hundred twenty-one dollars in twenty twenty-one. One million, nine hundred fifty dollars, five hundred nineteen, nine hundred fifty thousand, nine, five hundred nineteen dollars in twenty twenty-two. And a one million, nine hundred twenty-eight dollar. Deficit in twenty twenty-three. In accordance with the G S Government Accounting Standards Board Statement Number Ten. The city is required to accrue a liability of its financial statements for a reasonable estimate of the cost of the claims and expenses. Asso- associated with all reported and unreported claims. The amount of accrued liability would be determined by the annual actuarial report. Why don't you talk about the process?
Absolutely. Actually, my apologies for getting into everything so late. Um wanted to make sure I had all the. I started and teased Fox and actually in that first background one, I was should have read fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, so I didn't. Um so our process and a lot of what the rest of the report is is background information, how we came about to. The recommendation and how we came to have an understanding of insurance. I really wanted to have everybody. Else have that so that you could have see where we're coming from. Um and includes information that we went through the legal and contractual fiduciary obligations. We looked at MOUs uh from Prism. And so that language has been copied and pasted directly. It's uh straight from Prism's website into this document. Um we went and looked at the actual data and looked at the different uh levels in the actual data. Uh we looked at the current funding proposal, uh the internal service fund structure and timeline. Um the historical financial information reported in the act first, so went back, uh looked through. Twelve years, should also say twenty twenty-two, twenty twelve. Um. So we looked through twelve years of reports, or should run back a little bit further than that, but what's included in here is twelve years of um audits. Uh looked at historical information reported uh in the adopted budgets, so went through the various budgets to have an understanding of how. Uh insurance liabilities were reported. And went and looked at the self-insured reserve policies for other California municipalities. Uh to see if our policy was in line with other cities and that information is back in there as well. And we looked at some. Cities that were larger cities and then cities that were actually more comparable. Um but one of the things is you'll see is that really goes back to what are our obligations under our contract with Prism. So while the other cities had uh differences in policies, we have a policy set up by Prism. Um and then looked at historical information related to the decision to switch insurance carriers. Uh through that process, kind of came up with first, you know, the big discussion, which was. Would we want to let this reserve situation because we haven't had a reserve in place? And we had made an obligation that we were going to get the reserve back up to at least seventy percent. Um come on, see if we, because I can walk you through some of the other pieces or we can have a Q and A on this and you can refer back to the different pages.
So Sheila, just for clarification, so that reserve commitment was made in twenty twenty, correct? Okay, and it was going to be incrementally increased by so by twenty twenty-four, we would have hit the threshold of the minimum, yeah?
Correct. So however, if you go back to two thousand fourteen, when the fund was first established. The MOU for Prism says that we're supposed to maintain a reserve that is a hundred percent of the liabilities plus. With a little buffer. Um so the our policy of the seventy percent is actually is a bare minimum. Because it understanding that there are times where cities might have a financial need and so they're not funding the reserve in a time period. But really, the seventy percent should be considered the floor. And working up whenever we're in that kind of position to actually bring it to a hundred percent.
Question. Um so so just so I'm sure I understand. So so the MOU, so the agreement between the city and Prism.
Correct.
Was that we would maintain a hundred percent of the. So actuarial actuarial.
Liabilities.
Liability net present value.
So the net present value of the current and projected liability.
Okay, so so that was our agreement with Prism, starting in twenty fourteen.
Correct, that's their agreement with all of their um.
Their people.
Their partner cities.
And but then the city separately at twenty fourteen also or a little bit later made the the um policy decision that we would. Keep a seventy percent reserve.
That's correct.
So one is the agreement with Prism and one is just sort of our own internal policy.
Right, so prior to twenty fourteen, so prior to twenty fourteen, the city was with CGPIA. And CGP I had a completely different model where they actually take care of everything. And they have a higher premium. So they didn't actually require that information documentation in here as well. Um so they didn't require you to hold that kind of reserve because they had the premiums and they. They came in, they take care of all the risk management down to um sending people out to talk about operational risk management. Um and then the decision was made in end of twenty thirteen to move over to Prism. Um and then because Prism had lower premiums, but they also. Had a a lot more variability as we've seen, knew what happens on the claim side. Um one of the reasons that it seems like that decision was made and which is in the supporting documentation as well. Is they talk about a savings that they received of one point two seven million dollars from making the switch in insurance carriers. They gave the city an audit. It was stated that uh there was a savings from that. Um well, one point two seven million dollars, you take that by ten years on interest and all of a sudden you have a one point. Six million dollar bill that they received. So it wasn't a savings, it was kind of they walked away from a bill that was coming and ended up with. This, yes. So they walked away from a bill that was coming and received this uh bill ten years later. Um which it it actually makes sense now. We actually go through and go, oh, that's what that was. Uh and I think some of it was, I'm guessing, this is just a guess here, but. You know, there was a large consent judgment that happened in like two thousand ten or eleven. And I think there were some things that we were we were in excess. And so we're going to get this bill.
Was that the sewer? Was that the sewer problem?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, that that's my speculation on that part because I'm just going through the actors and trying to read the information. And so one of the challenges also as we were looking through the actors is there was a lot of inconsistencies. So. Prior to the switch over to Prism, it was very clear what our premiums were. We had premiums for general liability, we had premiums for workers' compensation stated in the actors. And then when switched over, that information kind of disappears. And it was hard to follow what the premiums were. And then looking through the budget, it's hard to find. What the premiums were along the line. And actually, I have to just say this to. With the staff that's in the room now, it actually speaks to the level and volume of work they have to do in trying to figure this stuff out because. Just going through to try to find this documentation has not been easy. Yeah, for us.
I I I don't want to ask two questions. Uh one of the questions was based upon what you just said and what um Fred shared with us. The one of your recommendations was not considering transitioning back to.
Uh CGP I?
CGP I.
Well, I mean, I think for tonight, we wanted to focus the recommendation on our initial task.
That's correct.
Right, which was to, we were talking about the reserve. And so then I have the. In the rest of the report, which was, here's the rest of the report, give you guys a chance to read it, digest it, you can come back and ask. More questions, but uh we've included additional recommendations in the back. But since our focus for tonight's meeting was initially to talk about the reserve, that was the, this is, we'll talk about the reserve. And then we have additional recommendations um for how to. Really think through some of this stuff, including going to CGP I, I believe. Um John has actually. And and the staff is like they've said, they're interested in CGP I as a possibility. And I think I included. In here slides from two thousand thirteen presentation, which was when the decision to switch over to CGP I was made. Um that outlines why they thought they should go to CGP I and put in some. Analysis of those as well. Um and one of the main factors, so I mean, they they say in the presentation that. CGP I provides all of these benefits uh as part of the premium costs. Prism provided almost none of the benefits. All the benefits would have to be additional charges. Um including, you know, to send out uh anybody to the organization, to help them with anything, to manage any of the risk management. Uh the whole premise was that. The city was going to be able to do a better job at risk management of CGP I. However, what a and and the other part was that. They were allowed and stated very clearly in the documents is that they were allowed to pick their own vendors. So the city was allowed to choose and select its own law firms to manage cases because in CGP I's. Situation, they will say, here's the case, this is a law firm, we'll sign to it. And we've decided that this claim, you know, you need to settle this claim to um. Do whatever on this process. So that that was, that was the big highlight that the city would have control. What is, I think, disturbing was that they made that move. Without setting up any of the infrastructure required to have risk management. And so what we've had since two thousand fourteen. Was we didn't have a risk management function in place to manage. Claims and to manage risk. Um and there's, you know, there's the not just from the the billing side and looking and coming back from reversements. Which I think the team is now doing a great job. They've gone back and collected because we had literally thirteen percent collection rate on our claims. For general liability. Um and that was, that was when it was starting to get, you know, it's thirteen percent. Um. But including the operational function of it, didn't have somebody coming in and saying, okay, if there, and this is where. Reporting is important, where say, okay, if we're having. Deferring maintenance and I use this as an example later is, you know, if you're deferring maintenance for trees, for instance. You might have a cost savings of a few hundred thousand dollars this year or every year until the tree limbs start falling. Onto private property and the claims coming in. So a really strong risk management. Would say, hey, we're seeing these claims coming up. What are you doing operationally?
Right.
And what are the changes that you need to be making?
Right.
So that goes to to streets, to other operational issues.
Well, and uh to compliments to the existing team, they realized this and they've uh they've pushed yet into risk manager.
Absolutely.
When did they start? Ninety days ago?
I'd say about three to four months ago.
Yeah, okay. So finally.
Yes, and a very welcome member of the team.
Absolutely, absolutely. So I'm I'm sorry, I didn't mean to lay this down a bunny trail in terms of rethinking that decision.
No, 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 no. It it but it it does help to explain, I think.
Right.
Uh because a lot of the question was what what happened. When we looked at what happened to suddenly having a large um negative balance in the insurance fund. And we really saw was it 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 was building, you know, it's something that when they made the switch over, it wasn't easy to see early on. But as time went on, uh you started seeing what happened by not having claims management processes in place.
Stop it. The city has been policy of seventy percent positive. Isn't there a breach contract there? I mean, Prism could come back and.
They they recommended. So they they. They wrote, they have a, it's in the MOU, I'm not entertaining. It's in the MOU that I put the language in. Um.
Yeah, written.
So some of the things you'll see were, you know, uh images taken straight out or language brought straight in, so. Uh let's see. So I am on page four.
For the larger package.
Yes, for the larger package of this. Now, let's go to picture three, bottom is paper three. Though the member shall obtain actual study performed by fellow of the Casualty Society, at least once every three years. We're now doing it every year, but uh prior to twenty twenty, it hadn't been done at all. Um based upon actuarial recommendations, a member should maintain reserves and make funding contributions equal to exceeding. The present value of expected losses in a recent margin. Was equal to. Or exceeding.
So that's where you come here with the hundred percent.
Yes, so equal to is a hundred percent. And then uh. It said uh equal to exceeding. So these one of the future recommendations. To consider right now, the current structure of the insurance fund, uh we're not accruing interest. And if so, if we had cash sitting in the insurance fund, because we're holding it in the event.
So for interest, interest accruals are based on the cash balances of each fund.
Hmm.
So we do, we do that on a periodic basis. And so as we're earning interest. We allocate it off based on that basis. So to your point, the the insurance fund. Really didn't have cash or very little cash. And so there's very little interest allocation to that fund.
Right.
As a result.
True.
And so one of the benefits of having accruing interest and also maintaining the cash is that. Uh when you look at actual reports, those are net present value of the liabilities. So if the liability doesn't come due for several years. So you you have the interest to offset that, the discount rate.
Any other questions, any commission members on this? Jan, how about you? Any questions?
Um, I don't think so. I think the other thing that was happening during that twenty thirteen to now. Was a buildup in the in the number, the amount of litigation and claims we we would have. Which I do think we're on.
Find it somewhere.
That uh we seem to be not, at least currently, we seem to be. Settling a lot of those or we have settled a lot of those in. On the downside, but I but but in any event, um it's it's really great background. I haven't had a chance to read this very detailed, but it's 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 very helpful.
Perfect. Uh then Stephanie, can we have a an agenda item for our next meeting? To set aside thirty minutes or so to for the council of commission members to read it carefully, come back with additional questions. And can I ask you to rejoin us once to that next? Please, thank you very much. My second question was, uh John King, um John and Louis brought us some incredible. Positive news last minute, uh two point eight million, John?
Approximately. So so far, we we.
Okay, good, John.
So so far, we we've uh recovered approximately two point five million. Um we're anticipating another two hundred fifty thousand dollars. Uh we haven't received it yet.
Okay.
Uh but we're we're fairly confident that we.
Was that factored into your thinking? That was my question.
So what we did was we we left it as we initially stated and talked about it. Move the fiscal impact, that's really an accounting issue.
Right.
Uh and if there was money, there was any existing cash in the fund. Will reduce with the impact of the general fund. So by having that two point five million dollars. Um it it just goes to our recommendation right now as a group. On what funding level we want to do, if we want to do seventy percent or if we want to bring it closer to a hundred percent. Um and understanding that it's not going to impact the general fund. What we want to say. Um we want to do the seventy percent and that would have no impact on the general fund. If you want to say we want to take the full. Two point five and say there, we're still a little bit under the two point seven, but that's would be acceptable as well.
Thank you. Is there anything else?
That is great news.
Great news. Is there anything else you want us to um approach as we as as a group of commissioners and and uh Janet as. Um with anything else you want us to be looking at as we read the the background material?
Sure, I think, you know, the last two pages are um on the additional recommendation.
Yes.
And so part of that is looking at. The reserve, which again, our initial recommendation, which was the seventy percent, just absolutely do that. Uh then we can consider if we want to do the higher. Um make sure that we have it stated someplace that it's actually the minimum. And whenever it ever dips down, we need to work to replenish the fund in two or three years. Um.
Let me ask a question. And and this this is piggyback on Janet's question. Um. If the MOA says we need to fund that basically one hundred percent. And we have made a a strategic decision as a council, I would imagine, to fund at seventy percent, do we have the legal right to do so? And I don't know the answer to the question.
I mean, I I'd have to look at the and and as a lawyer too, but I mean, I have to look at the whole agreement, but just in looking at the at the language. I mean, I guess you have a non-compliance with the term of a contract.
Right.
But then what are the damages?
Right.
I mean, so I guess, you know, does Prism have a claim to say you're not complying with this? Like, yes. Okay, so then what's the damage, right? I mean, so. To date, there have been no damages, because.
So we have, so we. So well, they would come and take it from your general fund.
Yeah.
So I mean, we looked at a number of cities and I think there is, you know, having that flexibility in really in times. That if you're not funding the reserve, you're not taking money out of the reserve, you're funding the reserve for a year. But then you you move back towards bringing it to a hundred percent is something in within a few years is. Okay to do, it's not best to do, but um you want to keep it as close to a hundred percent as possible, I think. Uh but one, like to have some of that flexibility in there.
And and you start to say something, sorry.
I I want to read the MOU because I just want to make sure that this, it's the news is.
This was what I received off of their site. This was the public.
Do we know whether she has the same terms as.
Uh I don't, I put a public records request in with them and not received.
Then then being us or the city or.
Work with Prism officially.
You know, because I mean, sometimes you have like, this is a sample contract that you sort of use and like depending on. The actual client, it may have different technology. So I want to make sure that we're looking at the ours.
Right.
And evaluating whether it's a mandatory thing or a recommendation or something like that. Before we start kind of like. You know, make conclusions about whether we're required to do something or whether it's advisable to do something. So I wonder what the actual contract.
Can that be done before the next meeting?
Yeah, I just referred over to John. I think Lewis would be able to um pull that information and verify what our existing MOU stipulates.
Yeah.
So that we can apprise the commission of the latest and greatest, so you can make a.
So so I can point um to Sheila's uh comment. Seventy becomes our floor.
Mm-hmm.
Our aspiration is one hundred and we want to operate as close to one hundred percent as possible.
Right.
Okay. And then the kinds of discussion we need to have.
Is there a reason we can't have a copy of that? So and can I ask, I'm sorry.
Please, go, go.
So the way I understand Prism and and Sheila, you may, and then Fred, you guys may have said I just didn't know this more. But the way I have understood our Prism deal and how we've operated. Is that we contact them when we have a claim or a liability comes up, right? Like we get sued. We contact Prism and say, here's this issue. We work with them to determine how to best proceed. But we ask them, are they going to, I I mean, it's a sort of a little bit amorphous to me as to like how they agree to like, yes, they'll cover up. To a certain amount and then we sort of negotiate that as the case continues. Is that how it's been happening?
As I understand it, when the city first.
As I understand it, when the city first went over to Prism, how they conducted their insurance changed later on. So I think we we switched over in twenty seventeen and twenty nineteen, the city was uh, made aware of, we're changing the way we do our processes and our protocols. And so now the way it's processed is the city is self-insured, so we have an SIR of a hundred thousand dollars.
Right.
So if we're entering into a lawsuit, the city must defend itself up to the first hundred thousand dollars. We defend ourselves through the process, and then once we've settled, you really don't have a significant insurance partner handholding you through the process. Once you've settled, then you um, ask for the reimbursement, and at that point, they review everything that you've submitted to them, and then they need their determination. Now, I'll put that with an asterisk that I do recall, um, in the last two years, we've had one where they have been more of a partner and come to the table and been able to work with us on a settlement amount um, that they pre-approved with us, and so there's a a different kind of dynamic with them.
So.
Um, but that's been our experience.
So when I, when I looked in the files, it looked like the um, switch had happened prior to twenty seventeen, that it.
Oh, I'm sorry, I I did misspeak, it was earlier than that.
So I think it was uh, twenty fourteen that it moved over, um.
I think there was a significant change in the twenty eighteen nineteen time period.
So what I was gonna point out is, you know, under section seven, I do have a link that takes you to the presentation that was made uh, back in twenty thirteen on uh, the difference between Prism and CGPA. I have some of the slides in here, but you can go ahead and have a look at the full um, presentation where it lays out the the pros and cons of them. Um, in this, in the presentation, it had initially the deductibles of ten thousand, but they immediately went up to a hundred thousand very quickly. So that was.
Chair, if I if I may, um, just add a little bit more here. I know that the matter about um, whether Prism is best served in the city has become a topic of conversation with this commission as well as with city council, not this in this year, but as early as last year as I recall it. And so as you see at the finance department, management services doing deep dives on these things, whether it's the insurance fund, cost allocation opportunities, because we need to start thinking about those things and some of the other recommendations here. Uh, I want to share with you that uh, management services has been charged in looking at and providing a recommendation or an analysis at the very least, because so many of us have worked for agencies that have been served by CGPIA. And so we'd like them to also be involved in this process with you in looking at the analysis and recommendation to the city council on, are we best served with Prism, are we best served with CGPIA? What does that look like for our future? And I'm right there with you, the timing is right.
Okay, perfect.
It is, I'm sorry. And CG, CJPI. CJPIA, that's it. As I, so to me, it's like they're a little bit more of like a quote, traditional insurance product.
Full service kind of product.
Right, whereas Prism is a little bit more a little self-insurance, but they'll cover it, but you have to kind of work with them and you're not really sure. You know what I'm saying? Like, maybe that's.
I think you can expect a little bit higher premium, but it's more more s- full service and a bigger pool. Um, of public agencies. Prism, you're kind of met with almost like contract management, as the vice chair mentioned. Where you have Prism, we also have Carl Warren, that is then our intermediary in helping to administer and oversee the management of um, the cases that might be.
And CJ, CJPIA would do workers, so we we have Carl Warren as our workers comp. Where CJPIA would do both.
That's good.
And there wouldn't be Carl Warren anymore.
Carl Warren was also involved in general liabilities or, right, with the general liability.
Yeah, Carl Warren does the general liability, and then there's uh, intercare for the workers comp.
Okay.
So there there are two third-party administrators that manage it, that work in conjunction with Prism.
Okay.
Um, on there, um, but back to the point about CJPIA. They're kind of more of a full service, so it's, you know, they have a list of attorneys, you know, that are that are approved by them. Um, their their whole case management is is a kind of a different structure. They're much more uh, hands-on in managing the process.
If you go, if if they, if they do the negotiation, then there there isn't any question at the end about what they're going to cover insurance.
That's correct.
The big difference between them.
You have an insurance partner from the get-go.
Yeah.
Instead of the city, I'm sorry, you have an insurance partner, partner from the get-go. It's almost like you call your car insurance and you know you have coverage. Versus insure yourself, get yourself through it, and then um, apply for reimbursement for anything that the city has spent um, on attorney's fees or settlement. Fees if there is any beyond a hundred thousand dollars, and that's where all of the, so what um, John and Lewis have provided to you in terms of the recouping of um, funds, I think one of the earliest ones was from twenty thirteen. Um, is anything over that hundred thousand dollars that the city has historically uh, spent on these and needed to go back for reimbursement?
Yeah, Prism, as long as they don't like.
That is correct.
So I mean, they had like CGPI from my understanding, that that's they have professional risk management where the the city is designed. Well, yes, even I think what this team is doing now is very, which will continue to work whether it's CGPA or Prism. But it's um, I mean, what they have is the level of actuarial knowledge and all of their details. Like this claim is going to this point, this is.
I'm curious with the scale of cities that use Prism versus CJPIA. Like you said, right, like who has the expertise in our city?
So you know, I I I stopped by their booth when we were, when we were in Sacramento, and I'm like, we're very interested in you. Um, and uh, I I recall, they had a list of cities. I I remember La Cañada was on there. Oh, for Prism, oh, I meant CJPIA. CJPIA was like, there were a lot that were like us.
Yeah, so like, what kind of, what cities are with? The only other one that I personally work for that I'm aware of is the city of Florence. But that's some some of the information that we could provide, so that's a larger, much larger, full-service city to give you an idea. But that's only because I have worked for them that I know, we'd be able to provide that information. It's South Pasadena, a city with that south.
Right, like Prism makes economic sense for certain cities, that is your point, yes.
I mean, you just have to have that locked down.
We can absolutely ask the staff to include that when they come forward with the analysis, but I'm so glad that this conversation is happening before you. And I also, this is why it was so important that we went ahead and paid CJPIA to stay in their good graces in case that is the uh, recommendation and the path that we decide to go forward, because we wanted to stay in their good grace witness. With the um, one point six that we got hit with almost ten years ago.
No, they are providing us in full, in this evaluation.
We can get an update as to where we're at with management services and not enough.
One more thing, the the reason I was asking all these questions.
You'd agree.
Kind of went to to the hundred percent level. So to me, I think the reason they probably recommend or require or the hundred percent is because effectively you're self-insured.
Yes, you are.
So they're saying that's that's the right way to go.
Yes.
If you're self-insured, um, which is kind of interesting since there are insurance carriers, so you you, so it's kind of like, we may, you're assuming that they'll never pay you a dime.
Yeah.
By having a hundred percent, right?
Right, because it's it's a high deductible carrier, so you have to prove that you can pay it. You know, if they, and somebody claiming that they've saved, that was your fault.
Right, so, right. So to me, if they were telling me I had to, if if I didn't want to do the hundred percent of the net present value of my actuarial and I wanted to do seventy, I'd say, well, that assumes you're never gonna pay me, so why am I even gonna like do business with you if I have to actually enter into business practices where my assumption is you're never gonna, I'm never gonna see a dime from you.
Well, don't forget some of that includes deductible too.
No, I understand that, I understand that, but it's it's a little bit, yeah, I.
So that they're saying like what they think will be your, the actual reports look at and consider what they think the claim expense will be to you. So the claim could be higher.
Well, if that's the question, Sheila, is the actuary, what they think it will be to you, or what the claim is actually worth?
Yeah.
Those are two different things, I think. To you is sort of.
Thatting out what Prism is paying back.
Yes, it's it's, if it's if it's what it is to you, city, then they have to make certain assumptions about what Prism might pay.
I'm not insurance expert, so I'm not gonna pretend I know that fully, but when I was looking at the actuarial reports, it looked like it was what we would have to pay. So one of the things that I was noticing.
Okay.
So like on the reimbursements, I was noticing was that you would, they were projecting was off from what we were actually getting, paying, and it was very odd, I mean, general liabilities, workers comp seemed to be handled quite well.
Right.
The general liability was where the issues were, and that's where the reimbursements came. So they were in their reports, they were thinking, this is how much the claim is going to be to you. And I'm like, why is this so far off? Like, oh, because they were expecting us to have reimbursements. That would mean that we'd have to go back and get the reimbursement, so that is.
Yeah, I I think that was my kind of big question of what, how, how is self-insured liabilities defined? Is it what we have to pay out the entire claim before we see reimbursement, or is it what we're obligated to pay after reimbursement? And yes, we also have some language about, um, when you, when you recognize claims, expenses and liabilities, it says it should be reduced by an amount expected to be recovered through access insurance.
Right, so the actual reports actually are expected net.
Okay.
So that's the, um, we look in the actual reports that we received uh, back in August, uh, it's specifically net reimbursements.
Yeah, that was, that was my next question, I was trying to find, I know we saw them, but I can't remember.
They were circulated by PDF in August, and they were, I think they're also on the website on the agenda. But so that, because I asked that question back in August, and so when when I was writing this, I had that in mind, it was net reimbursements. So. And and that's one of the reasons, like, one of the recommendations in here is making sure we're looking to put in KPIs that looks at reimbursement. Uh, to, so there's that consideration appears, the actuarial report and what our reimbursement should be, are we meeting those reimbursements? Um, I have a feeling that the team is going to do that anyway at this point, but it's something to consider is to have as an indicator for future, I always say, you know, you make good policy when you're good people, because someday it might not be. They want to make sure that you have good policy regardless of who's in place. Um, the other one is, you know, I like to see the premium expenses or costs come back either in audits or in the budget, because that was very hard to track, and so uh, it's such a large percentage of our budget. And it's such a risky percentage of our budget, I think having the premiums for workers' comp and general liability would be something good to have. We noticed when we were looking at different cities that, you know, some of them were talking about the rising rates of insurance. And one of their, you know, risk factors and their forecasting was rising with insurance, insurance companies leading state of California. So I think it's something we want to keep in mind. Um, to have that bought into the budgetary process or the audit process, so we go, okay. We know we're spending this much on premiums, and then we're spending this much on premiums and things.
Any other questions? Thank you. Oh, you're, I'm sorry. Oh, okay.
And then we'll have the discussion, I think, for the, um, we want to just preserve. Uh, the other thing is the way that this insurance fund was set up was on a cost allocation that used kind of a sixty percent to the general fund. Um.
I would say it's like fifty-eight, forty-two.
Yeah, it was, yeah, it was kind of a find my exact area that I spoke about it. So it was done yes, you have sixty percent, ten percent, five percent, like waterfront, lighting, landscaping um, and sewer, and then the Arroyo came in. So really, I think one of the cost accounting methods I should look me at is, you know, the the assessment, so this is impossible, funds revenue should be generated through assessment city funds based on their claim experience and outstanding liabilities. These departmental assessments shall be evaluated annually and just as needed. So right now, we're using sixty percent general fund. And that goes as overhead to the entire general fund and doesn't look at a departmental level, and we're not using actual claim experience to come back and say, okay, for instance, let's say lighting landscaping unions, and you have had, you know, you haven't been trimming the trees, and that's created the cost. So the cost has been spread out without using it as a tool for operational change. And saying, okay, actually, these are operational changes you need to make. So something to consider for future is bringing in uh, that kind of cost allocation so that departments actually understand and bear the full um, cost of the operations. So so like in healthcare, you know, each department has different um, insurance rates because they have different risk levels associated with it, and so they take on their own risk levels instead of it being just as an overhead.
What does that do to the department's ability to budget, John?
Well, so it's, this is a really good point. One of the things we're gonna, we're gonna be going now, um, I'm gonna try to do before the end of January is a a um, cost-based fee study. But in in addition to that, is a developing uh, cost allocation plan. Basically updating and refreshing the cost allocation plan for where we are today. Uh, they've been using that as, as you've indicated, you know, and so you could say in one way, is it stale? Is it relevant at this point? Should it be updated? And in any case, it really does need to be looked at, and um, and just historically, from my experience, you know, usually the these uh, uh, risks really are worn by, you know, public safety and public works. Those are the two heavy areas that you're always going to see in any, any agency. But in terms of the actual allocations, we really do need to have that study.
Right, and and we do need to be, uh, you know, careful, since the study is the proper way to go and planning for it, because even um, for, from twenty fourteen to probably like twenty twenty, so they they weren't actually bearing the full, even even at the fund level, they weren't having the allocations happen, so as they went to start claims experience across the funds using the just sixty, ten, um, well, they ended up seeing a three hundred twenty-nine percent increase in their costs, and so there needs to be thoughtfulness in it and planning to make sure that you you might end up seeing some structural balances, because they haven't been fully bearing. Okay, so that's it.
Thank you. On our meeting on the Jan- uh, January twenty-fourth, this is gonna be an agenda item, please, give our commissioners all a chance to read the report in detail. Uh, we'll have Vice Chair Rossi lead the discussion again, please, and then uh, we'll ask questions. And the issue of funding, can we defer that until we've all had a chance to empirically read this, or do you do you believe uh, we we have enough information to make that uh, recommendation now? I think we have enough information to do that, yes.
I mean, I may think especially with the the money being in the fund, of the very least starting there and saying that stays a reserve right now.
Okay, would you make that a motion, is that something we need to go on?
So.
This is information at this point.
This is just informational, so it's it's not, it's not something that you can take action on in this meeting. However, it can be determined to include it on, for example, the twenty-fourth to uh, take this as an action item to do that.
Okay.
Just really quickly, so that we don't get surprised in January, is the action to make a recommendation to council and not to establish the reserve?
Correct.
I want to make sure we're on the same page.
Yeah, absolutely.
You can only recommend it from Joel. You can't.
I don't know.
I I would kind of like to see sort of, we have this this seventy percent, and I mean, just like it's someone to play like devil's advocate, like, do we need that, like, given our circumstances, I mean, is there another side to it, or is this something that's like, you know, you gotta have it? Well, I, just depending on what you need, you know.
So.
Because we're looking at present value of things.
Yeah.
Um. And that only if you like claims that haven't even, you know, sort of happened yet, because we're not.
No, they're they're incurred, but so they're not that they haven't happened. They they're incurred but not necessarily claimed yet, but you know that an incident has taken place. And that's that's the way the contracts are written.
Yeah, covered reported and unreported.
Yeah.
So that that's going to include things that are out there that just haven't materialized.
That is correct.
Then, well, they.
And they technically say incurred but not reported.
Correct. That's very, that's really standard, but I have links to everything in there, so.
Yeah, no, I'm gonna check it out. Um, but I actually kind of just would like to like look at the that policy and just, is this policy makes sense?
Right, so I put a, I put a link, I put a link to, uh, I put a link in here for uh the prism and as well as uh, there should be a link as well for um GASP, C G P I, I didn't, I didn't put a link into C G P I, because you know, I know you.
Okay.
But so I looked, I put in a couple links in for Prism. Right, and then uh, there's also GASP, by the way, I think there's, there's also room to discuss updating our GASP policy. Um.
Absolutely.
Yes, is there, there's kind of along the way. Yeah, updating a little bit more detail on how, on how we handle reserves, and something that we discovered as well, the process. And and I also put in links to the other cities so that you can have a look in here as far as how other cities are handling.
Yeah, I mean, I've been looking at other cities, you know, but. But I mean.
They have different.
You know, I I, it looks like these, I'm not saying it's not necessarily the correct to have, to have this reserve, I just want to know. What is the, what's the theory behind it? Why is, why do you have it? Why should it be seventy percent? Like, just I just kind of want to examine the policy itself. I mean, you know, I'm looking for minutes, the you know, something that that we should have.
Well, I think we definitely have to have a policy to be self insured, which is what we are. We absolutely have to have it. In my state of California from OSHA, you absolutely have to have. So if you say that you want to self insure yourself for auto insurance, you have to prove that you could pay up to a certain amount of money in case it happens. So in a lot of what I'm reading and looking at Prism is they really insure on the high end, so they're coming in, this is like catastrophic in certain areas too, so that that's where the benefits of being part of a self insurance pool, but.
So that, that you said that there's a, sorry. What's up with the shot thing? Is there, do you have like a link or something?
I I didn't include in here, but there is, if you look up in OSHA, because I I looked through a lot to try to understand, since there is variability, and then with uh different cities were doing insurance. We started off by, our very first meeting, we started looking at some different cities, and then then we went and got more detailed and more detailed and started pulling on the thread to find and.
This makes sense.
Yeah.
From a, from a business standpoint, um, the other, the other aspect of this it approaches the problem from a different direction, but it's the same result, is normally from my perspective, the ideal is always to have that fund balance zero. And in order to have that fund balance zero, that means the assets must equal the liability. And that's generally cash.
Right.
To offset the liability in there. And so that should always be the goal.
Right, so that was part of the GASP rule, is that GASP requires you to approve the liabilities, and you have to dash to offset it. And one of the things with the fund, well, it's talking about earning the interest, is, you know, it's not meant to just be a fund that's ballooning out of control. You can try to keep it as close to that zero as possible.
Yeah, neutral, kind of a neutral state, if you want.
Did you find any cities that had, um, there were outliers that didn't have these, you know, seven percent or eight percent uh reserves?
Uh, you know. Yeah, I mean, I did see cities that went into the red, and then they were to bring it back up, I think. Uh Riverside, I think Riverside was at like fifty percent, and they were working to bring it up. And then they were recognizing that they were in trouble. Right, and so we were actually at like ten percent as a fund, so we needed to actually start putting money into the reserve. Um. But I saw a number of cities across the board that did, did go into the red for a while, sometimes significantly, and then. They hadn't been funding it, and all of a sudden they were like, oh, we better start funding, and they made the commitments to hurry up and uh funded over a couple of years. Um, but that, I mean, that's what I saw that.
That's been my experience as well. There, there's a, quite a few cities that I've been involved with, where they've had like deficits, you know, insurance funds. And so, you know, if with my experience, I'm always looking, okay, if we've had excess revenues in the general fund in a given year, let's take some of that and let's start bringing down, paring down those liabilities. Uh, and getting that into a manageable target. E- even if it's not zero, getting it much lower than, you know, say, seven million dollars, for example.
The the great thing about the work that he's done is that now it's not going to impact the general. Because they were able to get the reimbursements back, and now it's close to being at that place anyway, so it can be a nice starting point. Um.
Always easier to start there.
But it's something that just has to be seen every year, is that, that's what we have to do.
And I think this is perfect timing too, because this informs the way we think about the budgeting process, which is going to start in ninety days.
Yes.
Um, on this issue, regard, wherever we end up, seventy percent, a hundred percent, whatever it is, do you only, so I, and I saw quickly that the um GASP or somebody's that you, you adjusted as appropriate. So do you do it only at the year end, or at the beginning of the year, or do you adjust your reserve throughout the year? If there's something significant, it's once, you only do it at year end?
Yeah.
Okay.
Because at that point, if you're in, you know where the fund, the fund balance is going to be.
Okay.
And so if you realize, you know what, okay, we're at this point where we know we're going to have this deficit, that's when the recommendation is to do a transfer to, to correct that deficit condition.
Okay, so, so whatever the recommendation is in January, that would be for the coming year.
So, for example, in January, so at the, at the end of the year, we're wrapping up the financial statements. At that point, we know what the fund balance is going to be. So if the fund balance is going to be in a deficit condition at that point, then the recommendation is to use transfers uh as an adjustment to make the fund into a mutual state.
But Jenna, what I think I heard you say is the recommendation we're going to make in January, this January will be, will be applied at, in, at what month?
Correct.
For the midyear.
For, for the midyear or the end of year?
Uh, I would, I would be uh recommending for the end of year, so do it every, yeah. So every year, the beginning of every fiscal year.
That's what I'm asking. Yes, thank you. Thank you, chair.
The two point five million dollars currently in the insurance fund or is in the general fund?
Uh, in the insurance fund.
Okay, so as long as it's there.
Sorry, I just want to make sure I understand all the details, where everything is.
So the great news is right now we have a reserve.
Yeah.
Yes, right.
So yes, that's great. Okay.
So, and then the monitoring of it to always ensure that it never gets into the state that it's.
Yes.
That it's, that it's been in.
Okay.
So the commitment is for us to all go back, carefully read the, the results of the subcommittee, please. Uh, you're going, you've committed to uh conducting another conversation.
Absolutely.
Another conversation in January, please. At that point, we will make a determination whether we're going to recommend somewhere between seventy percent and a hundred percent. And then that's a recommendation that we will then carry to uh the city council. And i- if it takes them this long to understand why that recommendation is being made, we may not make the the decision might not be made till April, but that's okay. It's, we're, we're doing our, we're doing what we're supposed to be doing as a financial commission, as a finance commission. Okay, this is what we're supposed to be doing. And by the way, I just want to point this out. This was as a result of Sheila's question back in August about the insurance fund.
Yes, sir.
We've been pulling that string now since August, and this is where we've gotten. So kudos to you, Sheila. Thank you very much. So, can I ask Jen, can I ask you to be part of that study? And Zen, can, or if you're going to be attending our January meeting, you also uh put eyes on this, so you can just be another set of eyes, intelligent set of eyes to help us think of this, sir.
Yes.
Thank you. And John, you had a lot of homework.
Always.
Shall we, should we invite Louis to that meeting on, in January? Why are you giggling, Stephanie? Louis might not want to come, okay. Should we invite him, Dom? What do you think?
I'd like to get an update, Lois, as to where we're at with our internal analysis as well, because if we're at a point where they're at a point to uh make a presentation, but we are, he loves being here. It's actually his birthday today, so we'll wish him happy birthday on his. Invite him over. Follow up and see where we're at with our internal.
If he's not ready to make comment, at least he's going to hear the discussion, so he will understand what the direction we're going in. He needs to hear this. And it's how, this is how the, the sausage is being made, correct? So. Great, thank you so much for doing that, uh, Brad. It was a lot, absolutely.
And yes, please ask any questions, because, you know, with the two of us, uh, and only two of us doing it part of the challenge of getting out is you need extra eyes to ask questions.
Yes, yes, thank you. Um, and i- is there you, you indicated there were a couple edits you wanted to make to this. You want to, want to make the edits and then repost it?
Sure.
John, do you think it'd be a better idea?
Yeah, absolutely.
Happy to do that. If you guys also see anything, please.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll get everything to. It's on the website now. It's current for in that, as you were, as we were going through it, um, she let me get all that, that, that data is wrong, and we need, you know, she was, she was finding edits in, in the moment, so we may want to uh edit it and then repost it. Perfect.
I was just asking where.
Yes, yes to both. No, yes to both, this Stephanie is back. And you know what? I'm going to continue forwarding and everything I get from Stephanie to you, okay? No, you didn't email the, the large report out. No, you, you did email though the uh, the executive summary, did you? You didn't get that? Okay. That was the larger report, but you did. Yeah, maybe you'll watermark. Yeah, do a watermark, right?
No, no, absolutely.
Thank you. Yeah, just over communicate with us for a while, silly and doing all the email addresses, it's great, thank you. So silly. Uh, thank you. Josh, I'll give you thirty seconds. Go for it, my friend. I know you have some ideas. I know you do, come on.
Thirty?
The, a hundred and twenty. Perfect.
I know a little bit about the history in this community. If this is brilliance on a level that's grown and singing a hundred and thirty four years, why is it brilliant? Because it's finished work. What's a finished work? It allows for self testing. Citations are there. Check her form, check France's work. You two are to be saluted for something that is way above beyond the calling. And you, sir, Mr. Chair, are to be commended for the atmosphere that you have created for your commission. You stand in history, in the good light here, in the good light. This is the time to study something that's been provided at the highest professional level. The highest. Spent forty years in local government, including seven here, and I wrote your policies. Study this, embrace this, let's stop hiding. You set the example to do that, Mr. Chair. End of the staff decides it has objections, decides it wants to dispute or recommend otherwise, that they be clear in a public setting, absolutely crystal clear.
Thanks, Jeff.
Last thing, a C J P I, I've been in and out of different insurance authorities, uh, including this one. They serve a great lunch in La Palma. It's an amazing facility constructed on our money. But I will tell you, having done this in the city of Bell, without Bill Statler there, he was not there. They have a long list of what they expect an agency to accomplish and measure throughout the agency. And that goes from police to fire to the provisioning of financial reporting. It's a long list, and they'll vote you in or out. So it's not a case of South Pasadena submitting an application to be reaccepted because South Pasadena was a problem with C J P I.
Good dinner, Josh. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. And I do agree, uh, Sheila and Fred do deserve our uh appreciation. Yes, um, quarterly budget update. So, yeah, July to September? Uh, we only want to hear good news, Julie.
Tonight I'd like to discuss the July to September twenty twenty budget update and then recommend the financial commission to receive and file the report as well as recommended for. So before I jump into the budget set, I wanted to kind of give a brief overview of the in our revenue. And John has mentioned before, our expenditures are linear, and then our revenues are season. So as you can see from the staff report, we have much more expenditure in the first quarter in the revenue. So this is the typical for our first quarter due to a timing of property taxes, which is our largest. But I looked at prior year's trend and noted that Q one, we received about two point five million in revenue. But in Q two, we received ten point five, Q three, eight point eight, and then Q four, a two million. As you can see, revenues come in at different times of the year. So we received five point six in property taxes in December of twenty twenty two. And expect to receive a little more in December of twenty twenty three. According to H D L's forecast, they project our current secured property taxes to come in, come in at fourteen point nine million this year as compared to prior year of our actual of thirteen fifty. So in January of twenty twenty three, we receive another one point four million in property taxes and expect about the same in January of twenty twenty. The other big plot of property taxes will be received in April twenty twenty four and May twenty twenty five. So in January of twenty twenty three last year, or the beginning of this year, we see half of our vehicle in loop taxes of one point four million and the other half in May. So totally about two point eight million in these. This year, we're expecting about three point nine million, so I'm estimating about one point eight, one point nine in January. The revenues that we receive on a monthly basis are, comes from sales taxes, franchise fees, utility, user stats, business license, when we permit parking permits, fire permits, parking citations, and then so overall, um, our biggest pot, which is property taxes, comes traveling throughout the year and not on a monthly basis. So that's why when you're looking at our general fund revenue for the year, you're seeing that we have no money in.
During this first quarter, i- is there any trends that you're observing that will lead us to believe that these numbers are not going to be changing? Is there anything out there, anything you see?
So U U T is the one area that I see, we, I don't know if this four point three million would be a reasonable estimate, just based on what we've seen so far. You know, just the decrease in usage and the decrease in rates, and last year we also spiked in gas or electricity and whatnot, so we received a lot. This year, not as much.
That's the, that's the element.
So for U U T, did H D L give projections?
No, no, um, uh, H D L generally does it for property tax and our sales tax and our uh business license. Those are, those are the three areas that they generally uh provide guidance.
So what would be a good way uh for future years when we see like a spike happen to try to figure out if it's like a spike in unusual situation, so just for the budgeting purposes, I'm guessing, to say. Um, and I know part of it was you came in, so they say, okay, this is an unusual spike, so we're going to um, maybe decrease our projections or, or think that this was an unusual spike.
Well, in, in general, when I'm looking at some of these types of revenues, I'm looking at five, ten years, and I'm looking at the average growth rate more, rate and change. Um, and so that's a general rule of thumb. But there's other nuances. For example, if we know, okay, prices are dropping, you know, for natural gas, electricity, things like that. Then we weighted downwards on there. So it's a very nuanced kind of thing, and it's just based on, on years of looking at this data and kind of extrapolating from it. The, the, um, the mitigating factor, though, even with that said, is the monitoring of it and tracking of it, and how is it tracking? And then making adjustments in terms of what we think is going to happen.
And I do think that you're on the right track with the approach that you've taken with the new consultants that you brought on.
Yeah.
Um, and going into that level of detail for that looks that historically exposed the tracking. So I feel like we'll probably in this situation be in a better place than we.
Yeah, and, and again, it, there, there is somewhat of an art, and it's just based on, you know, kind of years of, of working with it and looking at the information and kind of. Thinking, okay, based on my experience, what do I think, looking at this data, where we're headed? Um, on there. And the, the only thing you do beyond that is really monitor it, and if you have to make adjustments and true ups and things like that. You know, so for example, in the mid-year last year, one of the things that jumped out was particularly with the sales tax. Uh, and the property tax numbers and adjusting those upwards. And even, um. You know, once we publish our, our final results for the twenty three year, one of the things, for example, just looking at the, the, the property taxes overall. They're coming in even higher than what we projected. Not by a lot, uh, several, I want to say several hundred thousand dollars. I don't remember the exact number. Uh, but they're, they're, they're coming in fairly, fairly strong. Now, as HDL mentioned, that in twenty four, twenty five, for sales tax in particular. They're saying that that's going to be flattening out and almost slightly decreasing by point three percent. Um, on there. And, and so we're seeing some softening, but they, they, based on their, their five year, they're thinking that it will go back to a kind of a normal growth rate. In twenty five, twenty six.
Thank you. Good, and Sully, John, I didn't mean to derail you, but the reason for the question is, um. I, I am still burning from the mid-year adjustments conversation we had in March. Okay, and I don't want that conversation. Let's, let's not be surprised.
Yeah.
Well, and I think, you know, the one thing I'd say about that mid-year one is that it shows that the previous budgets, because we had interim finance directors coming in. And we didn't have the forecasting and the level of detailed forecasting, that there was some.
We didn't know the team in place.
There was, there was guesswork happening.
Yes.
Yes, um. I had a question on the charges for current services. So you have in here charges decreased, uh, majority of it was from film and plan check fees. Um, so filming being one set and plan check being a separate bucket. So for, what's, do you know the breakdown between, uh, the, the filming side and the plan check?
Yeah, so the plan check, we have a decrease of about a hundred and fifteen thousand. And then the filming is broken down into police building and the fire department. And that police is ninety two thousand and fire was.
And that was due to the strike, we believe.
The strike. But I talked, I spoke with Joan, and she does our permits for the filming, and she said, um, a lot of them are coming back in the. So I think for the second quarter, we'll all see.
Of course, the rains will come and you can't do filming.
So.
There you go, exactly.
And so on the, on the plan check side, what's, what's going on there in the plan check?
So I think what we're seeing a lot on the plan check side is last year, a lot of people were doing the pulling the planning permits and then doing the plan check. So this year, a lot of that is moving into like the building side, so building permits are actually increasing. So there's kind of an offset between the two. They're moving into a different phase. So not as much plan check as planning for this, I think, as one to the building side.
No, but then would building be under charges for current services as well?
Yes, we're all in there, so that's a net number.
Okay, so that's a net number. Okay. Um, is there anything else on the plan check side that is, or is it just because there were so many plans?
There's a lot of plans. Um, you know, contract two hundred fifteen is part of like the plan check, you know, and I think. Because last year, maybe everyone was in a quarter days and they want to start building and using.
When people spend a lot of time in their homes saying, hey, don't we need that? Yeah, I mean, whatever.
Also had a number of, um, major developments come through and submit their applications last year. Mixed use development projects from East of that. Many of them have not started because of the cost of construction. And because of the higher interest rates, and so we've seen a significant slowing on construction. And I think as we hear just in totality, as we're going to twenty twenty four, and all of us are hoping that we're able to refinance whatever it is that we're carrying. Um, that we also see an uptick in the building and development side of things for those that are in queue or might be interested in applying.
Thank you for being on top of that too. What else?
Um, we talked about, so that four hundred and thirty one thousand, half of it is due to the UUT being, you know, across the board, it's electric, it's gas, it's cables, so it's just. Um, the other area, the benefit is a charge for services, and that includes the plan check, the planning permits, all the permits that are being pulled. Also, I can produce the strike, I mean, the writers, the strike caused all decreases. Seeing those. Um, other agencies where there's a decrease of fifty eight thousand, that look like, um, there was about fifty thousand in my vernish, like, we're at that we received last year, and if we. For somebody who didn't go out again for it, or I don't know, maybe it was one time for it. So that's why. Okay, so when we look at all the plans, there's that big three million dollars, and that is just due to the state.
I'm sorry, can you, can you repeat that? What three million are you talking about?
I'm talking about the.
Okay, on the second table, gotcha.
That's a three million one time. The internal revenue and a budgetary, budgetary fund, that was just due to timing of some drug research that we have not completed for September. And internal services, like the allegations.
This local details exactly.
All right, so I actually, I'd like to say a little bit more.
That I knew.
No, I know. So no, because I mean, I think this is, because this is a quarterly report, especially this is a summary. Um, and I think that I'd like to work on seeing a little bit more detail. So for instance, on the plan check type things. Um, I do have a template. Can send out of, and it would actually then just feed right into the budget, if you're kind of filling it out a certain way. Um, but it would give us a little bit more insight into. What's plan track, what's, you know, business license, fire permits, that kind of information. And I actually. Pulled up the information to the template straight to the budget. Um, so that would help us get a little bit more detailed view and a little bit more refined.
Let me show you this page here.
I think I see.
And we can easily, uh, have something like this. Uh, tracking on, on, you know, on our quarterly basis.
Further breakdown.
Exactly, so.
I mean, I go off of that to make a summary.
Right. So also, also let me see, because it, and it is.
Oh, no.
Yeah, so also this, because it includes like how, you know, during the current year versus the variance, because I think one of the things that it helps to know. Um, for instance, is that, you know, that was budgeted, so some of the things that you have in the summary, it's like, yes, they're different from last year because. That's what decisions are made in the budget. But, um, just make it actually just easier, so it's a, just a report.
Yeah, absolutely.
The summary is great.
Right.
But, but it helps us on a quarterly basis ask a little bit more detailed questions.
When you give us too much detail, we will let you know.
Yeah.
I'll give you the details of the trial balance.
That's just me spiraling, yeah.
Yeah, and I just have one little question, and, and I know I talked to John about this earlier, but so what's kind of struck me, this was that. The first table has projected revenue thirty six point four eight seven million. And, and I was like, whoa, whoa, whoa. Because in the second table, it talks about our budget number of, of, uh, thirty nine point five six seven million. So to me, I was like, whoa, I need some kind of explanation, like, why is it projecting to thirty six million when really are we still on track for this thirty nine million? Did you have the same thoughts then?
It's the incremental remaining projected.
Yes.
The in.
Yeah, so no, so no. What we've already received.
And I just wanted to note. I wanted to note that I had to tell her to calm down.
Actually, I, I just told John, and I said, like, I texted Sheila, I didn't, I aren't understanding this.
And I was like, calm down, it's okay.
Okay, so this is just what we need.
Residual of the budget.
Maybe, yes, maybe it's the column. I don't know. Like, I was like, projected revenue is only thirty six million dollars.
Yeah, no, we could say. Point taken. We can say remaining, remaining estimated.
Okay, okay, it kind of made my heart go like. Hit or patter.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I, I want the same thought then now. Um, yeah, I hadn't just hadn't gotten to it.
We have the D and T on the other side of the wall.
Have a different paper later.
Okay, so give us the bad news about spending here, Sully.
So as we're about, you know, a quarter, I mean, yeah, twenty five percent of the way done with the year. Your expenditure lives were at twenty, we're trending at twenty four percent. You know, just some of the bigger differences comparing from last year to this year is, um, personnel costs have gone up. And, um.
Police and fire have gone up significantly.
Police and fire went down. The ones that went up are the positive numbers.
But they've expended twenty eight percent of their total budget.
Yeah, it's a little bit more because I believe, wasn't it, police that had, um, the vehicles. The personal vehicles and whatnot that, you know, we had. So they also have staffing shortages, so there's additional overtime to be able to cover both on the police and the fire side. Because they have certain staffing levels.
So that should smooth out by the end, end of the year, is what you're suggesting.
Depending on staff. We have a number of improvements underway. And I just wanted to kind of point out, there was, um, for community development due to the housing element, they had to spend more money on consultants with the jungle plan, down to specific plans, community engagement, urban design, but the planning, that they didn't have to wash. So their, you know, their costs went up, and it also with regards to public works. We were using the same vendor from Citywide Land Services for many years without much adjustment to the rates. And because they, yeah, because they had to, they were gonna increase their rates due to the increase of incremental costs. They had to, we had to go out and find a new vendor, and with that new vendor comes increasing price. So the first quarter, we experienced a ninety thousand increase. So they're too big, even in management services, they, they increased a little bit, and then most of this time was spent on a newly bid management module.
Any questions, Miss H, yes?
Miss H first. Um, I, I just, you know, and I, I, I brought this up during the budgeting process also. The city council, the city manager, the management services, to me. Because I know there have been a lot of rearrangements within, among those groups. So I think it's very hard to kind of actually see, compare year to year, at least for the last. Couple of years, because. Costs have shifted.
Yeah.
So anyway, I, I just, I think now all the shifting has been done, so on a going forward basis.
Yeah.
It'll be easier to compare apples to apples. But I think the twenty two to twenty three and, and prior, it's a little tougher to kind of compare those.
And a lot of IT costs were kind of separated within all the departments in the past, but this year's budget, we put everything into management services. So they're taking from.
Yep.
All that. And then, so you see that twelve thousand or thirteen thousand in city council, twelve thousand of that had to do with the Rose Parade Board, but you guys directly gave them.
Right.
It said, boy, through.
Right, we used to give Chamber of Commerce a hundred plus thousand dollars, and then they would take that and give twelve thousand of it to the Tournament of Roses. And we said, that's interesting. Why don't we just give?
Yeah, so some of the changes are due to just how we allocate everywhere.
Any questions, any other questions or observations? So I think we need to have a motion.
So our total adopted budget expense and expenditures, since we are twenty three, twenty four, was at thirty nine million, one hundred forty seven thousand, nine hundred and ninety two dollars. But now our updated budget is thirty nine thousand, thirty nine million, three hundred sixty seven thousand, seven hundred dollars. In the last three months, we had five budget adjustments, council approved budget adjustments of two hundred nineteen thousand, seven hundred thirteen. I want to keep you guys in the loop of where our budget.
As the budget changes through the course of the year.
So what is our policy, or do we have a policy on, um, adjustments that happened to the budget right after the budget's approved? So es- especially I'm looking at the seventeen, seven, nineteen, twenty three, uh, um, how we had like a hundred ten thousand dollars of additional, uh, allocations happen. Like three weeks after the budget was approved.
Yeah.
So is that like an anomaly for this year, and then we look at trying to limit number of, um, budget changes that happen?
That one specifically I can speak to, that is for the police department operational assessment. And the consulting came back after we asked it to do one more community input, uh, uh, engagement. And, um, came back and said we'd like ten thousand dollars, and I think council said, keep it towards five. Um, but that does bring their total up to a hundred and ten. It was a timing issue where we weren't aware of it at the budget time.
I'm at the crossing guards.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, crossing guards. Um, I believe the, um, quote came back, uh, after the fact. And it was significantly higher, and there's only, it's almost like a sole proprietor, provider of, uh. Agencies that provide crossing guards for public agencies, and it's, it's a cost that we bear, um, both provide to the school system.
And I think, I'm sorry, Dom, I think, as I recall, when that came to us, first of all, we, we, we approved a second crossing guard at.
Yes, so there was.
So that was an initial cost, but the other big cost, as I recall, is that there was a change in California labor law. So that, the cost of service went up because you have to pay people for the downtime or something like that in between when they're in the morning and the evening. There's some, I, I don't remember the details, but it was a change in California labor law that requires payment. You can't just say, okay, we're, I'm paying you for these two hours, now go home for two hours, and then I'm gonna pay you for two hours. There was something that we had to pay for some of the downtime.
So it's reasonable to assume that we're not gonna see another line item like that next year, so they are re-correcting this, or we know that and we'll build it into the budget, right, Tom?
That is correct. There are, just in my experience, uh, almost every city I've been at, there's always, um, of these oddball adjustments.
That's, that's a case that makes perfect sense. I think it's having that kind of policy when there's something that has changed or something that is significant, that makes sense versus just bringing it up afterwards, but in those situations.
Yeah, i- i- it's, unfortunately, some of, sometimes it's timing. Um, it's just these, some goofy circumstances that were flat out unanticipated at the time of the budget as well.
But I do appreciate now having it so that we're aware of it. But I think that, I think we might want to look in the future to creating some sort of process for just how that works.
So this went directly to council, it didn't come to us, correct?
That is correct.
Yeah.
Didn't this kind of come up with you as, you know, general public comment from a lot of people who were. So I guess, didn't this kind of come up with you as, you know, general public comment from a lot of people who were, you know. Wanted to see another crossing guards, it wasn't like the city planning for thinking about it, and it was like, we have to get to public. Input, and maybe that again, now that I listen, talking about it is very, but.
Yeah, we also had a consultant way in.
I think I just need more process that, it's not about this specific line item, but if a budget's approved, especially if we're looking in like a deficit sort of situation, to have certain mutation come back.
That's right. Was it what kind of station, general contours, are you thinking of just intrinsic, like the one that happened, you sort of things that we should have, or actually were thinking about, but didn't make it into the budget, but just it's not in like. A few exactly what like, how was you kind of putting that as a policy?
Yeah, I mean, because I, I mean, I saw some policies that they look at doing most of the adjustments around mid-year. Um, for this type of thing, I don't know if it's like a threshold or uh just because I see like decisions. Being made or things being brought up, they go to council, and they'll have a financial impact, but it's not an impact on the budget. So we'll see if we can cost this much money, but it's not, uh, how does that relate back to the budget? And I guess we're trying to figure out how to keep the finance commission up to date on how things are going with the budget. So if we say, okay, we are break even, or we have this much um deficit or above. And then all of a sudden, you're like, oh, I didn't know that three hundred thousand dollars of expenditures came in. Right, so it's just, just as from a reporting and tracking.
Yeah.
And and separate from anything on here, it's just a.
So you're thinking more of just like information or advisory, these things going through with opposed to saying. Mission.
Yeah, no, so I'm not saying that they shouldn't come through, but it's more of a reporting protocol and process to have an understanding of like, okay. It says, there's somebody who's thinking, how does it impact the rest of the budget, because the council can sometimes make decisions that are separate from the budget.
Yeah.
Or it might just also be like. Looking at the way the financial impact reports are done, and just saying, how does that tie back? So.
Yeah, and Jen, is that something we could ask you to do, because you're sitting on the council, you're seeing when these cities have uh. Uh additional expenditures are being made, will we ask you to bring that back to us?
Yes, I could do that, in fact, I think I have commented every time we've approved something on the budget, I. I I have, I think I've done, every time I've said, now, just to make it clear, this is not in the budget. So, and it's usually in the staff report that's given to the council, it will say, this is gonna impact the general fund, because it's not in the in the budget. It was not budgeted. But that doesn't get to the connect, the finance commission, so that's the missing link.
Right.
So, so, yes.
We kind of need to know these things.
Yes.
Because like, oh, that, you know, it was approved after the budget, and it's kind of, this stuff is happening, and we're unaware of it, unless we're following, so you have to.
So we need to bring back to the finance commission, so.
Yeah.
Does this not suffice the way it is, so that you do get like.
We're talking, no, that's not about this reporting, we're talking about more from a proactive perspective of. You know, when things, you know, large ticket items come up or whatnot, or whether it's reported earlier. Um, because this is coming at a quarter, we said that, or if it's just that it's before it gets to the council. That just something's brought forward to us if we're meeting, and it's saying that we weren't meeting in that situation, but you know, things, for instance, like. If you have a one-time expenditure that is gonna hit the budget a certain way, but if you have a lease expenditure, it's a different kind of impact on the budget. And just having to think those things through, because it's at least will be a long term, and that will impact your your operating budget. Where actually a short, like a lump sum kind of costs um will have a different impact, so.
It reoccurring versus one time.
Right, so.
So clarification is the question that we bring it to finance commission, or it goes to city council, or that we just update you on a regular.
Hmm.
Periodic basis as it's happening, so that you have an accounting.
Sure. I'm thinking more of like an update. An update, but but I mean, I I would say that I'm sure it already fresh, but like, we don't want every little thing that gets.
Correct.
You know, like, something that's gonna have some defined. Impact in some way, I would.
I agree with you, because I don't, I don't need to say every little thing, but I think um like the materiality, and then if there are things that are like larger scale. Spends, especially where. And and just making sure that when it comes into the fiscal impact report that's given to the council, that it's somehow tied back to the budget, and I'll use. That, you know, I'll use like the the lease car rentals, uh leases is a good example, because there's uh, there's one way if you purchase them outright versus the way of lease. And lease was um, use of the fiscal impact will say, I can't, I don't remember what it said, but, you know, it. It doesn't talk about what it does to the operating, and you just have to kind of keep an eye on what happens to your operating budget. Because that's where, that's what we're supposed to be balancing, that's where you're focusing, where like the one-time costs are things that you can say, well, this is a really large one-time. Cost, or this is a capital expenditure that we put into.
Yeah.
So to Jen, my my comment, when I read this, I said, this is two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Minus four, that's that's almost nine hundred thousand dollars. If it, if it happens every quarter. That's, that's, to me, that's material.
Yeah.
Okay, so, do we, do we just wanna, we we wanna know and understand?
Yeah.
And I think all, these are all of them, right, there's nothing that's been omitted.
That is correct, there's, there, this is a, this is.
First quarter.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
So, go ahead.
Right, so um, so Sheila's going, I mean, last year, when this Tesla thing came up. Um, now, as a commissioner, we were trying to ask to say, don't you think something this big should have been brought to for discussion? We got a lot of pushback, or recall this happening, and they were like, no, it's none of your business, and it's like, cool. Yeah, so um, I I do think that for things are that meaningful, um.
The city council, I think, held that the decision on the entirety of the project was under their purview. There were elements of the electrification project that went to other commissions, like the um environmental commission, things like that.
I think it's like a large financial impact, and I think a lot, the financial analysis around that could have used maybe a little more.
Right, because I mean, like, the decision is ultimately still up to the council, but I think having a process in place to evaluate. Projects from a financial standpoint, and and I actually, I take issue with things being so sired off, I think there needs to be a little bit more interest to those approach with the different. Commissions, because if you have a hun- multi-hundred thousand dollar decision being made over here in public safety. That's completely separated out from the funding, you have multimillion dollar things happening over in um. Your public works, and the hundred and twenty four million dollars of projected projects, like, there has to be some. Interconnection and understanding between the.
And that does happen, I know that at public safety, the fire department just recently took a rescue ambulance. And gave them some options, got some direction, but then the recommendation that they then forwarded to the city council.
Right.
So I think they can try to keep it under the purview of the different um commissions, of course, finance, such as everything.
Right.
Um, but.
Well, but I think that's, that's the point, finance does not change anything, so there has to be some sort of process in place, the finance, and it's not finance is making a decision on the project or not, it's more.
No set of eyes.
Another set of eyes on the 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 money side of it, because other.
Did that financial analysis, was it done with full thinking, because I I recall the financial analysis, I don't know where it's done now, but like. I think departments were putting it together, and I I I didn't know if. People necessarily in that department has that full breadth of knowledge to be putting together a full financial analysis for.
We have the most updated one going to city councils next week.
Like a large.
Um, and I'd be happy to share that with you, also, I think that is the big.
So.
It's under the, for the um quarterly uh update on the financials and the electrification project.
Okay, so, so here and again, like, without even. That that specific project, but can use around this kind of dollar figures, is there's a difference between how something is done, if it's considered a capital project. Right, and then how it impacts the budget if you're doing a lease, and it's just something to consider, because then that impacts staffing, ability to, you know, spend money for recurring. Expenses such as staffing, which is a large part of it, but we have to keep those things in mind, because it's, and I'm not. Yes or no, one or another, we have to like actually have some sort of evaluation, does it make sense to this capital project, does it make sense to go ahead and have depreciation happening on here? Does it make sense to do it as a lease, and understand what that difference makes, not necessarily monthly cost, as the impact to the budget, because we are just supposed to try about its budget. Right, so, same, it might just be the same dollars there.
That there's always an opportunity for the city council to defer something to a commission as well. So let's say there is something that's not currently under your purview in terms of a process or protocol, if the city council would like. To ask and kind of lean on the finance commission for your professional review and recommendation of something, it's also available to the city.
So what I'm gonna argue is that we just looked at a nation that showed fourteen years mismanagement, and. And and I I'm gonna argue that what we actually need to be looking at is putting in processes in place. To avoid that, because it shouldn't necessarily be any single council member or any group of council members. Because, you know, the reality is you're gonna have a council that has no financial experience whatsoever, and so they're making these decisions, and they're saying, okay, and. Or I want this special project, or I want that, um, and. So I I would say from a more conservative financial standpoint for the health of the city, that we should create processes in place to prevent.
In in some cases, it could be processes, it could be a policy, in some cases, it could be just best practices. We're asking for best practices right now, the more sets of eyes that are on some of these things, the better. And we know we don't have the right to reject or accept it, we can only make observations and recommendations to the council, but the council cannot. Treat us, be selective in what they let us look at, either we look at it all. If it has a dollar sign in front of it, we want to look at it, or we don't. So I'm I'm, I I, you're seeing me get my little Irish up right now, okay?
Are you, basically, attention, absolutely, I just want to clarify what that process of expectation is, so that we.
Yeah, okay, and Janet, we're, hopefully, you can relate to these, to the to the council, that we are reasonable people. We do dissect things, we we do dissect things a lot, okay?
I mean, I think that we, I mean. You know, I can't speak for the council, I can only speak for myself, I mean, I think major, I mean, material, anything material needs to come to the finance commission, in my view. How you define materiality, that may be a different question, but um. And I think that's true of all the commissions, I think there's so much work in this city that needs to be done, particularly because we are coming off of a decade or longer of some. Tough times, um, we really need the commissions more than ever, that's just my own personal opinion. Um, and I I agree with Vice Chair Rossi, that I think putting processes in place is very helpful, because personnel turns over, and you don't know. What you're getting sometimes, so um, yeah, I mean, I think, I think a lot of the. My sense, just in the year I've been on council, is that sometimes things come up very quickly.
Hmm.
So I think a lot of the times, we've been like in these big rushes to get things done, but maybe as we get our hands around, our arms around things, we have. A little bit more time to give things to the finance commission.
That's what we're trying to do too, if you should, when we think about it, well, we're we're actually building a calendar, we're building.
Yeah.
Work work processes that that uh throughout the year, so we're trying to do what the council is trying to do.
And and maybe also like for the report itself, or for something like large chicken items, like guidelines, and almost checking it off, okay, like, is it about this, is it this? Just have a sense, because you just need to know how it plays into the larger picture, so again, it's not a matter of. The finance commission being in a position to say yes or no to a project, but it's to say, okay. Hmm.
Yeah.
How's it gonna affect the rest of things?
Right, is it in the budget, is it gonna be, is it outside the budget?
Is it something we had to think about next year's?
Yes, yeah, 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 yeah.
Perfect.
Yeah, so the question.
And I don't wanna, and I don't wanna hold things back, so trying to figure out how to do it in a way that is streamlined. Um, is absolutely perfect, I don't wanna like.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't wanna put any like additional, what is it, probably.
I think it's something we, that we need to be working toward. Um, like you're saying, chairs, that, you know, we're just, we're even trying to get the calendar now in place, because it's just not something that, at least in the last five to eight years. We had, maybe ten years. Um, give us a day, I said, like, well, we need to put the act for on the calendar, and we just put those.
So Dom, can we ask you to make um some, do some broad. To how we can, um, we as a finance commission, can get our eyeballs on these types of expenditures. And I was, I'm gonna throw a number out there, anything over twenty five thousand dollars, we'd like to see it, okay?
So we currently have the city manager's authority is up to thirty thousand dollars, anything over thirty thousand dollars goes to city council.
Perfect, anything over thirty thousand dollars.
So I'd like to take that to the city manager and the um city council. Uh for their recommendation, because I just want to double check that that's under your purview, as it's stated, and if it's not that they look at with that recommendation, that we look at. Um, council expanding the purview of the finance commission, so that it becomes a part of that process.
Well, it might be also just us working also with the city staff and the councils to figure out what makes sense. Because I don't think we have an answer right now, I think we're just saying like, we'd like to figure out what would make sense to just put some checks and balances in.
Yeah, let us chew on it a little bit, to your advice chair, only because I do want to also be really intentional about the timelines, so when you see an item, for example. Um, agenda posts tomorrow for next week's meeting, and so if you have, it it's also just figuring out the timing of things and the the logistics.
Right, no, no, I think that it's something that we have to all think about, because again, I don't wanna, I don't wanna create additional red tape, I want to do it in the most efficient way possible.
Yeah, I think we have a good um example of how we've gotten it down, where last year, we felt a very funky. Uh act for and budget back and forth from finance commission into council, and I'm hoping exactly to your point, chairs. With the calendar before us, we're very intentional, and none of us feel a pinch at on time, and I think this is another one that we can get.
Thank you. Thanks for bringing it, anything else still?
No, no, that's not.
So, Sule, have you finished, have you finished, or?
I have done the budget status update, but I wanted to go into our performance measurement and where.
Please do, but do we need to vote on the budget?
It's received by file, but yeah, you can vote to approve it for councils, to be placed on council.
And we should vote.
It was in December, yeah, I don't think it was in December sixth.
So we should vote on this now, for, okay. Do I have a motion to accept this report as stated, and?
I'll second it.
Okay, Stephanie.
Uh Chair Julian.
Yes.
Vice Chair Rossi.
Yes.
Commissioner Clay.
Yes.
Commissioner Asner.
Yes.
Commissioner Henry.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Sule, you have generated great conversation yet again, please continue.
Okay, so performance measurements, I know we talked about the K P guys, and obviously a lot of it, but I just wanted to keep it in this format, because how. Speaking of, you know, for finance.
Hmm.
I just. City managers and.
Okay.
So that's why I kept it this way, but I kind of show you what we, what I had.
Okay. I'll send you my template.
I know, I saw your templates, I have something similar, which is kind of my checkmark of where we stand, but.
No, I I updated them.
Okay, and um, Sule, uh, I had the same reaction, this this is interesting. But it's 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 not particularly informative to me, okay, so what I would like to do is, I'd like to um uh do it on on the subcommittee. Uh, and. Uh, this is my area of expertise, this is what I do for a living, so I'd love to 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 uh link up with one of my colleagues here, and I. I'd already asked, um Cynthia, if she would join me on this, okay, because you guys have enough of a burden, you have your your insurance presentation. So we will work with you in order to help design that, using the templates that that have been suggested to us, and we will work back to this group next. No, in general, thanks. Perfect. So take us through this, take this, take through the high points, please, but this 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 is just confusing to me, continue some bit, okay, thank you.
Okay, so bankrupt, we are done with September, we're working on October. Passion funds are day-to-day deposits, those are all current, um with regards to the audit, we are currently in progress with the M T audit and our annual audit. M T should be wrapping up some of this weekly tomorrow, and then we'll focus on our annual project, I think we have a couple more to put together, we have a minute to get to them. Um, number of audit findings, we don't.
Just in time, right, Terry?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I have a dumb question, the M T audit is that, uh, what's the frequency of that?
Once a year, and it's about the same time as annual. Writing both of them. Um, after reporting, we receive the G F O A reward for, uh, award for. Um, after reporting, we receive the GFOA reward for a award for June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. Uh, see what else? Federal tasks quarterly reports, we do a timely, those are current. Present monthly financial or now quarterly financial reports, we're doing that today. Major report we will present at February twenty twenty-four. The five-year general plan, we have NHG as our close doctor. And the treasurer's monthly report, so he presented that July, December and November. We will have October and November which presents to you in January. Everything else is. And as we coming towards the year end, December and January will be really busy with our ten ninety-nines, our twenty-twos. Payrolls, you know, nine forty-one.
What you just said is is exactly the reason that I think we need to talk. Is I first page I did get, I I didn't understand what you were trying to communicate. By the time I got to the second page, I was lost. Okay, so perhaps that's something you would you would use for another recording. And then we just call out the key items and see if I can help you get to.
There's a difference between having ones that are monthly, we don't have to. Seeing some of the numbers I'd like to see.
Yeah, perfect. Thank you. Hey, John, just just as a note, that uh quarterly report in February. How are we doing?
The quarterly. The midyear. So we. We really won't start on that until probably the middle of January. And and there's a reason for that. Um, a lot of times the activity. By the time we receive it and then we record it properly, you know, so for example, the midyear is as of twelve thirty-one. So normally, a lot of the information will be just be coming in the second, third, fourth week of January. Um, on there, we need that uh recorded so that we can see how we're really doing. Um, before we start making adjustments, estimates, things of that nature. Um, on there. For example, as a general rule, when you're looking at property tax, you know, we get our first um. Increment of it in December, usually the the rule of thumb is. The LA County is estimating that that's forty percent what they expect for the year. So therefore, you can extrapolate at that point what they're anticipating and then compare to see what we have. And and how is how is that, how are those two melding? You know, do we see problems with it, or is it tracking fairly consistent with our expectation? So there's there's things like that that we have to do so that we have, like better putting it. You know, clean financials as of twelve thirty-one, before we start saying, okay, here's the adjustments we need to really make for midyear.
So you will have approximately thirty days once you get all that information in the mid-January to be prepared for a. Good conversation in February.
Yes, the the other thing where, you know, uh, last year, uh, we were kind of putting all these schedules together. We've already have this type of these structures in place now.
Last year, you were just trying to find out where the coffee machine was, Jimmy. I mean, you'd just arrived, for goodness sakes.
Yeah, um, so so it'll be more streamlined, s- simply, but uh for this upcoming year.
We can all exhale.
Oh, and John, see to talk about the.
Yes, so one of the attachments in here um is basically um looking at our. Uh vacancies purely and um. So normally, going forward, I wanna break this out a little bit differently. And and the reason why I wanna do that is from my perspective. What's most important when we're looking at authorized positions and and you know vacancies is. Full-time positions. I'm less concerned about seasonal. So I really want to break that. So so I really wanna kind of break those two segments out. And then say, okay, what is the percentage of the full-time? What is what is that percentage, that type of thing? And so when when you're looking at this, you know, the 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 departments that are the most concerned is um police. You know, having uh in the full-time, having thirteen vacancies. Um, of course, this report is for the first quarter, so this is as of September thirtieth. Um, on there, uh, having the thirteen vacancies and the same thing with Public Works having the six vacancies. And again, because this means, you know, level of service, if we're not fully staffed. It's impacting level of service. So so this is kind of an important thing from that standpoint. It's less from a financial standpoint, because of course we're saving money because we don't have the personnel. That's not the point. So so that's something going forward that we'll we'll break out um and there so it's more readily apparent. Rather than the commission having to do the math.
Yeah, I'm wondering, could we see, um, this is just sort of static as at this end of that order. To see kind of a what happened the previous quarter, just so we have and we can like and say like.
Comparison quarter to quarter, sure.
Cause if we could just, we could just, you know, include the previous quarters report. Just tag that on, just so we kind of know what the changes are then.
I'm sorry, I have a question on the part-time, is for the community service, is that meaning like um seasonal?
Not so much. Yeah, it it it's, we have certain positions, they're just simply part-time positions. Um, there are some seasonal, and especially as that pertains to community services, which is basically in a recreation. Uh, that type of thing. And then we have other positions that are, you you know, they're just simply part-time positions for the entire year.
And then on on police, so police has a um, I did do the math. And police has a seventy-six percent uh for the full-time on the vacancy. Um, well, seventy-six percent filled. So what's going on in police on the challenge of. Filling those positions?
Well, I'll give it a hand, because Sulee indicated that we had less straw on the police um. Services because we had filming during that the period of the. The, pardon me, the strike. So now that the strike is over and they start filming again. That's gonna put even more pressure on the on the men and women we do have. Yeah, so to your point, yeah, what what are we doing then?
Vice Chair on the police side, and this is something that we are engaging with city council, is you might see if you look at other agencies, they're doing a lot. By way of hiring bonuses and really trying to be very competitive in this space. There's less and less people going into public safety as a whole, fire is also impacted. And so agencies are being pressured to get more competitive. Well, South Pacific United is not the most competitive, and in fact, we have one of the lowest retirement rates. So we have to be very. Creative with telling our story and trying to get people interested. Um, and we are one of the agencies that's still upholding our standards as to what types of candidates we would accept into. Um, while other agencies are now more notably becoming more flexible with their standards. And so I think the two hand in hand, we are doing the most to try to get out there. Um, and um keeping council apprised because they do recognize that this translates to. Uh, exactly as the chair said, the pressure on the existing force, we do have standards, uh, service levels that we need to upkeep. And so we're working with the chief and BPOA to look at what else we could be doing before we go to council with some recommendations. The uh department assessment is uh being completed and should be presented at a joint meeting of the city council and the public safety commission in early twenty twenty-four. That'll also glean um some best practices and some suggestions for the council's consideration moving forward on the public safety side.
So when they had the public safety consultant, did the they consider uh the financial aspect and to to. Because I understand that there's some different models that can be considered, how do we like the bonuses and the higher wages for the, to be able to. Um, recruit and retain, but then keep it within a certain budget.
Yes, and it also looks at appropriate staffing levels for department and community or size.
Okay.
For other institutions that are sort of relaxed standards, like what would that look like in terms of?
Relaxed uh standards on past histories of narcotics. And so um that's where an agency and um personnel hiring officer really weighs out the liability. To an agency and to the service of our community, if you are bringing on someone who's gonna be really responding in people's. Most vulnerable positions, they have a colorful past of personal decisions.
You're just taking this full circle, we're back to risk again.
Oh, everything's connected, it's sure, and it's complicated because it's not just one thing, it's not just salary, it's not just. It's the recruitment pool that everyone's trying to pull from.
And John, can you please remind me when we our MOU with least POA um is up?
Yes, all of our MOUs for full-time will be up next year.
Can you say that, that's?
So we um twenty twenty, we will be starting negotiation conversations early next, early. Twenty twenty-five. We're good through twenty-five.
Yeah.
Through fiscal year.
So June thirty, twenty-five is when those uh um MOUs.
So those negotiations really need to start probably in fall of twenty-four.
That's what I'm getting, so that's coming.
Are the standards subject to negotiation with the unions, or is that something the city can just?
In terms of the personnel hiring. Um, I don't believe that the unions are involved with determining what that level is. I think here's like a best practice. Uh, most agencies have been holding to as to that's certain things have to come a little bit more relaxed. Um, but that really depends on the police chief, the city manager and HR working together to say. You know, what standards you would look equal to for this agency.
God forbid we have an incident in in the picture now. You got us talking, John. Okay, you do this a lot, you know that, right? Yeah, you are a troublemaker. John, i- it's interesting, you talked about breaking it down by uh full-time and part-time, uh, both uh. Mr. Rossi and I both had that notes, we printed it out, and that's exactly the note we made, okay, so that would be helpful. Uh, good ad in terms of doing uh comparison quarter to quarter, that's another good ad. Again, don't wanna make, don't wanna make this any more complex than it is, but just. Creating uh understanding, knowledge and grounding, grounding us in understanding this one.
Well, and refinement of some of these reports and things, you know, where, you know, uh. We put something together and we we think it, oh, this is really great, but we really need other people to reality check it and say, okay, what's wrong with this or. How can this be better?
John, I I I'll be asking you this question when we do budgets for next year. We have, we've allocated fifty-five police officers, we're living with forty-two so far.
Yeah.
Do we really need fifty-five? That's gonna be my question this year. And how do we determine?
Yeah, that that's really not my area.
Me either.
That is going to talk about, um, because there was a, just as we experienced in the finance department, a decimation of of a department. There were significant changes a number of years ago to the police department, and that's where you saw last year. The reinstatement of the Office of Professional Standards that oversees police training and policies being. Uh, brought back in, and so I I do suspect that there is gonna be a uh. Kind of a happy threshold that the consultants and states for a department or size, community or size, and our typical calls and and volume. That we should work towards this. Will be happy to share that with you.
Thank you, just to inform us, yeah.
And so I think, right, that's where sort of commissions and city councils have to say. That's what a staffing level should look like, can we afford it? I think that's what kind of you're getting at, can we afford that?
Right.
And what are models that we can afford?
And what are the models that we can afford?
And absent, when we afford it, before you award it, we thought. Okay, thank you. John, anything else on the uh the staffing piece of it?
Uh, no, that that pretty much wraps that up. Okay, so the the next area that we were going to uncover was simply the uh. The uh finance commission calendar and then also um. Uh, followed by the work plan and to go over that and see is there. Uh, we've made some changes based on the comments from the prior meeting, uh, but we still wanna go over this again. Uh, you know, a lot of this is it's just constant, you know, um. Refinement and and it being fluid that things change.
Yeah, I'd I'd like to change one thing, November twenty is Thanksgiving. Come to the house for turkey, it's fine, but I got.
The commitment of this commission just is unmatched.
I'm not allowed out of my house on October.
October thirty-first, Halloween, come on.
Well, I was gonna say for Thanksgiving, I'll bring, I'll bring wine.
So I would ask us to, do we wanna look at the calendars right now and and then come up with alternative dates?
So look at this, and and the same thing even with the work plan.
Yeah.
Um, taking a look at this and for recommendations for any changes. A- again, I view these as is somewhat fluid, you know, things are, things are constantly dynamic and that we we keep this current for everyone.
Yeah. In the, in October, as opposed to doing a Halloween bunch of drums.
I have two to three thousand people come to my house.
I have kids I've seen now for the last twenty years. I I got, I got my adults, I got my former kids bringing their kids there.
I'm doing my community service.
So, um.
Do I need to bring the wine to your?
Help hand out the candy. Probably your house too, or do you do?
So, um, can I propose we move the thirty-first to the twenty-fourth of October, so Thursday? And any problems, concerns, issues?
The problem might be that we might not have the chambers, so we might have a meeting in here.
Oh, well, this is a lovely. I feel like I bring some wine.
Fire department folks join you then.
We'll draw some pictures for it.
Exactly.
Do you wanna change October twenty, October thirty-one to twenty-four?
Uh, yes, ma'am, that's a, that is the preceding Thursday. Uh, well, let's look at it. Make that the twenty-first versus the twenty-eighth. Any problems, concerns, issues? And again, Stephanie, if we got a meeting here, it's it's fine. Not ideal between us.
Only if you have the camera fixed.
So I was gonna mention the June nineteenth meeting with city council was canceled because of Juneteenth.
Oh, yeah. So, but will we be, the joint meeting we will be having with city council is on the fifth, that is a, is a final working session on the budget, yes? That's the intent on that?
That is the intent.
Okay, so and then we will come back.
We have June twenty-seventh, just in case.
No, no, I I was gonna go to, I was, I was planning a vacation, I was thinking about missing that meeting.
Oh, go ahead.
You can, you can do remote.
Uh, and then we do have the twenty-seventh there, should there be any overflow from that meeting on the fifth? Uh, but the the problem we face then is when would the city council get the budget that we have finally recommended?
Well, we have the joint meeting.
On the fifth, but if there's any further work to be done?
Well, if we have a first meeting being made fifteenth, twenty-seventh. And the fifth would be, I guess.
With fifteen, twenty-seven?
There have to be a special.
But then we would have a regular meeting then on the twenty-seventh. We're gonna, we're gonna be very friendly that month of, May and June, we get to, we get together a lot.
Your commitment, I'm telling you, it's unmatched.
If we finalize the budget in June, and June fifth, would we want to?
Cancel twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven, but we have. But we have that in there as a safety right now.
So that's motivation, folks. Okay. Sounds good, um, in terms of the work. Do we have to, uh, that, we don't have to vote on that, do we? Definitely, the the two changes we made?
Oh, no.
Perfect, and you're gonna make sure that it's the uh website, correct?
Yes.
Thank you very much. I took a look at this and it feels like this makes sense. Uh, the the thing that we were, we were promised a tour of the water system, yeah. Yeah. I I that, I don't know if that was a promise or a threat to do.
If he wants his budget.
Yeah. He'll make it work, okay.
We have butter, sewer and Arroyo Seco because of the the enterprise funds.
Oh.
So I'm in, because I, right now it's understand, but I think we're looking at things that we wanna make annual budget. Or annual work plans.
I believe we are putting out an RFP.
The the golf. Stuff like that, that would be a good example. Project that has fiscal impact that.
Sure, I'm sorry to interrupt. So the city council received the uh market analysis on the Arroyo Golf Course and the direction was go ahead and put out an RFP for a master plan. So at this point, it's on the staff implementation side for us to put it up in our piece, so they give two pieces of direction. One, new master plan for the Arroyo Golf Course and all of the pieces that come along with it. Number two, look at immediately opening up some kind of food service in that space. Without touching and putting any capital investment in the restaurant, so that we can get that facilitated as a service there, but the restaurant would be included in that master plan. Um, and so we can absolutely.
When that comes to that decision, right, and then looking at the financial feasibility of some of this as it comes, that would be a. A good one for.
It'd be critical for a finance commission because at the the first, as you know, um, it was sixteen million. And so the question becomes how you finance that, or do you get an operator that's gonna help you finance it, or do you? So, but but I think, but I think that the, you have to have the plan, it's like everything we do, it's like clear, we have to have a plan before.
It has revenue generation applied to it too.
They thought the insurance is fine.
To your point, there is a second major project as well that council's given this direction to is the library. So we're working in tandem with these two major projects right now.
I feel like these large financial projects should get a second look. You know, financial analysis, financial like, what are the financial options, I I remember at least with the golf course. Right, I was trying to understand, do you do it in one step or two steps, like? And then kind of the phasing of it and what's more financially, because that's a enterprise. Prize basically, right, so it's like. What's the financial sufficiency, self sufficiency of it, someone's got it. You know, and and looking and giving a critical view on that model and the inputs and. You know, the assumptions behind that.
I think you're, you're absolutely correct, but I think you have to have the, like, you have to have the plan for. I think the plans idea is like, that would be there, the option.
For January, I meant just know what's happening with water sewer. And but then to Zen's point is saying, okay, but when the giant projects come. To bring it over here so you can have just another set of guys going, does this make sense? Because she's, she's responsible for the cash management side.
Right.
Right, making sure what what, how does this impact investments, how does this impact our cash availability, so she has to know that too.
Understand that, but you 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 gotta have the point, like, there's the concept. There's the concept, but I think it's too early to bring it.
More ready with some numbers attached to it. Figuring out if these numbers were good assumptions that got put in and the returns on the model, then it makes financial sense.
Right, the other, the other big project I think that's going to be coming um is. How we finance the road improvements. Street improvements, that's gonna be coming because our consultant should probably be delivering that report. In early twenty twenty four. And that will, I assume that that will have some financial numbers, uh some estimates on cost. And that's gonna be a big one because I, I assume again, that that's gonna require some sort of financing.
Was that the consultant we met at our last meeting?
N H J, yes, Craig Hillen.
So is, is reported due when?
We're hoping that he's tuned up to be before uh commission.
So we're planning, well, the flow will be first year end.
Right.
And followed by the five year. Uh, followed by mid-year and then rolling into the budget cycle, development cycle.
So year end is the report that you're, the for the first coordinates, that's correct?
Yes, yeah, so that's the annual, the annual audit of financial statements.
Right. That seems to make sense, but it doesn't um. Close the gap that uh Mr Rossi pointed out in terms of having an understanding of water sewer and the royal projects. So we need to build something in there.
So it's the enterprise funds. So, and I think that's something that just should be annual. Right, so again, going back to the schedule, it's like, okay, because we're not spending time during. Any of these months looking at water sewer and enterprise fund that does roll into the budget. And so going, okay, this is what's happening in those funds, we've had our eyes on that, so by the time it's budget time, we're ready to go.
Yeah.
And then when a project comes, we we know, if we, if we look at the project, we're down like, I don't know. I don't know what's happening with those funds, how did that even work?
So, uh, just for clarification, so when we're talking about the world, are we talking about the golf course? Okay.
Because also in Arroyo Seco sewer project.
Yeah.
But I think that um Commissioner Rossi's talking about the fact that these three are enterprise funds. So it's the enterprise fund. Pieces.
Yeah, it's the fun time to look at it.
And it may. The open, it it looks like on the schedule, the openings could be the February twenty ninth meeting or the April twenty fifth.
Can I, can I ask another question? So I know we've talked about um at council. Um. And and you've mentioned it, Sheila, that the la- land, the lighting district. So I forget the name of the landscape and lighting district.
Yes.
So that fund.
Yes.
Loses money and we suck money from the general fund, and I think to the tune of eight hundred thousand dollars a year.
So, so with with that, right now, from the purely the budget standpoint, it's about seven hundred and seventy four thousand. That the general fund sub will is planning on subsidizing to that fund. Um, we're looking at that, we're, so one of the things I'm looking at right now with respect to that fund is I'm looking at the results for. This last fiscal year ending twenty three. And then looking at what was budgeted for twenty four. And then maybe coming back with proposals on adjustments at mid-year for that based on the analysis that we do.
Okay, I just, I I know when last time we talked about council, it was like, well. Something's gotta be done here.
Something else, yeah. It it basically right now, we we receive around nine hundred thousand dollars uh on an annual basis. Um, in twenty three, um, our preliminary numbers are a million, um, two hundred and fifty eight thousand dollars of what was spent. In twenty three on the lighting and landscaping district. Um, and again, where, where uh I'm thinking for adjustments because. The budget for that year similar to twenty four was one point seven million. And so what's driving the the fund subsidy from the general fund, that seven hundred and seventy four. Is based on that one million, seven hundred thousand dollar figure. And so it's like, okay, do we want to kind of keep that to? With their programming? Two. Adjust it to closer to what the actuals were for twenty three? Or to say, no, they have to live within their means, you only have nine hundred thousand dollars. That's all you really can spend on that fund. So there's, there's a, there's an assessment district tax.
Okay.
And that's what generates the nine hundred thousand.
And what, what's in the assessment district tax?
What is?
Like, what's the percentage, has it like a?
I think it's a couple thing, as I remember, there there's a state council report on this, it's two general things, it's like, there actually are some, um. Some traffic lights and some lighting like on Fair Oaks and like sort of, that's like almost half of it, I think. That's expense.
So I'm seeing the revenues.
Oh, it is an assessment on people in the district.
In the district, yeah. It it's considering property tax, it's a separate property tax.
Okay, can just a little bit more detail on it, I think we're all a little lost.
And and I'm sorry, uh, so there's uh an assessment district is at at one point. Uh, the community got together and and voted to tax themselves in that district to. Uh, to provide whatever, I I don't wanna say a higher level service or whatever, but what we want, we want more landscaping, we want. Lighting, more services in that district, and we're willing to assess ourselves a tax to pay for. The the lighting assessment district, I don't have those details with me, I can get those uh for you. Um, but it's, it's a special district, and so that district is getting an additional tax and an additional property tax.
That's on my one.
And.
So my point to this, without getting into, without, because we we're kind of doing it by memory.
Yeah.
Is that it's a, if there is a giant kind of pull from the general fund, that I think it's. I think that would be a really good issue for this commission.
Yeah.
To really examine. Um, and and just, as you might recall, if you've lived here long enough, there was actually. A, a ballot measure, but it went out by vote, uh by vote, by mail. About eight years ago and it failed, and it failed to increase the tax.
So, so this goes back to like my point from way earlier about the more detail. And I'm looking at the system like, what's the tax exactly, I think, you know, for, we need to have that kind of level of detail and understanding. So that when these things come up, we can say.
Right, well, that's my, that was my point in bringing this up, I think that this is, needs to be considered by the.
You think we're upset about crossing borders?
Oh, yeah, yeah, so go ahead.
It sounds like there is already a report put together on what this is all about.
There is an engineer's report uh that has to be prepared every year. And it spells out the services that are being provided uh for the district.
But I think, John, you might be talking about a staff report.
Yeah, like the.
It ha- it it does every year.
And we care about the money.
So, and so I think that you got, you were, there was one proposal to to put it on the, or to do another election, and we said. No, because, anyway, we said no, because. It failed last time, and part of the issue is that the way the ballots work is it's by door. So if there's a multi-family, um, special election, if there's a multi-family unit. They get the number of votes equal to the number of doors in that multi-family unit.
I guess my question, it sounds like there's a district that's benefiting from a certain level of services in in your, in your property tax. But the property tax isn't harming the services.
I don't wanna misspeak, I don't know if it's a county or district, or it's a confined space, so what I can admit is that we'll. Additional information provide that to you as a starting point, because I think we are going off of that.
I don't know that it has boundaries.
Yeah. A physical.
Is it the, a city by is the district?
No, like a local district, like a part of the city. That has a special assessment, but somehow the services provided for that special.
The point to all this is that we punted a little bit, and we said, okay, for this year, we'll just deal with it, but it needs to be dealt with. Yes, so I hope. Was not to try to solve the problem tonight. Put it on your work plan.
And obviously, those are the things that we're talking about in insurance as well, because those are also impacted by the the way the um insurance funds.
Yeah.
So those four.
It needs to go on your work plan, in my.
Yeah, so we just need to know how those work, because now none of us know about tax.
But it needs, in my, and I think the five, the five year um planning has, the five year forecast has to be on the work plan, in my view. Again, I'm not on the commission, but I'm just sort of.
No, no, but I mean, the realities, we're supposed to work together collaboratively.
Yeah.
So.
So the lighting landscape district is on my mind, the the five year forecast, I I love, this commission needs to. See that.
I think we also need to look, we need to look at revenues and as far as it's um, like considering what are some revenue possibilities?
No.
No, we're, we're putting it on the work. Where is, where is the question?
Which one? The five year.
Yes, you're putting it on top. The water sewer, that's water sewer, Arroyo. January, February. Yep. And in the five, when will the five year plan be ready for review?
Sometime in January.
So we we could eat, that would be uh January, February, huh?
Do you want to say February?
Sure. Yeah.
So we'll work on the.
Thank you.
Because we want you all to have a meaningful.
I'm gonna focus on mid-year, that that's, that's coming in federal.
And and I do think we do need to have a conversation about. Revenues, and and we have it once now, but also continuing on as we start considering again, there's, and saw that, um. Impact these, this one.
Yes.
One thing to look at, but then also understanding what are the revenue sources that have been being impacted over time? And reducing, and what should we be thinking about? Um, I mean, I I have questions versus answers.
Well, it, tonight, it felt like there were a lot of questions that were, that surfaced.
Yeah.
Anything else on this? Uh, schedules for us the annual schedule? Please.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that's, I mean, you get projections, we'll have five year projections.
But we have, we have the.
When in the five year projection?
So we're looking at, trying to have that wrapped up by the end of January.
Okay, so I guess that answer is that once N H A has finished their five year projections, that's when we can.
Yeah.
Look and do that. I mean, I think it starts with the five year projections, and that will give us a much better sense, because.
Where to, where to focus.
Sorry, not to add another holiday, but May twenty seventh is Memorial Day.
Why don't we have a Monday meeting?
It's a Monday.
Why don't you just take every holiday, just make a meeting on that day?
I think this was a way to make sure.
Well, it's what?
That one's supposed to be May thirtieth.
Yeah, May, May thirty. May thirtieth, yeah.
So we need to.
Yeah.
I think that's why we moved it to twenty seventh, because we wanted to give it some time to adjust whatever may changes, but now. So it should be the twenty eighth or twenty ninth. Because we couldn't change anything if we do it.
Twenty ninth then. Or that is a western. Or that is a western.
Well, since it's a holiday, we probably shouldn't do it.
Goodness gracious, wow, this group is fun.
So do we also want to add on the calendar? Um, the library master plan, because we were talking about, so. We're talking about lighting and landscaping, we're talking about the five years, we're talking about a royal projects. And major projects, so the question is, do we also wanna include the library master? As part of that, or no?
And libraries whenever it's ready, right?
I think library and streets, we don't know exactly when that's coming yet.
But when it comes. Product of twenty twenty-five. I believe what we're looking at doing immediately is establishing a at-op committee, including community members.
It's like, so what's our um, process for getting on it?
Sure, so we um, are looking at uh, connecting with the legislators, because.
Like are, is it one person, like before, I think it was like in each, so now we have one person.
We've centralized it, and there is an interdepartmental team. They're also looking at putting an RFP out for just a grants service, there's a lot of companies that do this, where they take a look at you. Help them prioritize types of grants that are out there, and they kind of help you seek them out. Um, so there's the Grants Avenue we can explore, there's also the legislators that have earmarked um, and been very uh. With our neighbors, and so we're absolutely keeping a mark of that, and we'll be knocking on their doors for funding opportunities, and then I know that we. Would like to approach council with the opportunity of sponsorships or naming, or, you know, creative ways of offsetting some of the. Costs of a new library.
So should we have special revenue funds on that?
It's a little early. But I think the, I thought, the library is gonna have to come to this commission, as a, and also the, the, I I'm sure the street repairs. I think it's just a little early, we don't know when, except.
Um, Fred had actually mentioned the last meeting about the idea of um, AP management and contract management, I think. And I think there was a previous public um. Public note that was sent in about contract management too, so I think. I've got some questions there.
Yeah, what came up at the last meeting was, was the uh. The adjustments were made to the accounts payable after fiscal year end. And I posed a question, why, why do we have to have that? And my resp- the response, I. He said, well, you're you're waiting for the vendors to send the invoices. And I. Find that incredible, to be honest with you. You, your vendors, you suppose specifically about construction. And that that uh, you're delayed sending your invoices. Yeah, their business like any other business. They depend upon cash flow, had to pay their health, you know, equipment and all that, you want to get those invoices out, get paid as quickly as possible. So I I found that response incredible, frankly. And I think that what we need to do is to. Is to um, improve. Your accounting for accounts payable. And I think probably part of the issue is for different departments, and they're not pursuing the vendors to get the invoices, or. They're not booking the invoices when they're receiving, which I suspect that may be the case. And and I, there's, there's a problem in terms of getting the invoice approved once it comes, and getting it booked. And uh, that's, that's, I I I look for the finance department to fix that problem.
And I, I think there was, so it's the. Understanding why that phone was there, and I think it benefits with the decentralization that had happened. And then the other question is, is, this goes back into the budget process. Is there a need for some things, like resources specifically AP management? And in contract management, so you have this very large um, capital improvements project happening. And uh, or budget happening, and you need to be managing on top of. That as well, to make sure that you're really on top of the the contracts that are taking place, and. So I think that's the question, I think is, again, it's questions to try to have more understanding, and to see what resources are needed.
Yeah, so. First part of the 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 question, your concern, um, in terms of the AP process a year and. What we're doing here is very much normal for city governments and operations. There's, there's nothing unusual about it, uh, at all. In terms of, you know, the vendors being responsible and getting invoices, um. You know, again, that does fall with the departments, you know, they're managing the projects or so forth. Uh, there, and so that then becomes a resource matter. Uh, within those departments, um, and in this case, it's, it's primarily pu- public works for that matter. Um, so what we do is, we typically, we have cutoffs in there. And so one of the things, you know, last year, it was just, just kind of a different animal, but normally what we do is. We, we put um, limits on requisitions can be issued towards year end. And we put limits on purchase orders, uh, as we get towards year end, have like cutoffs for those. And the reason for that is so that it speeds up the timing of these invoices, if you will. To have these kind of clean cutoffs, so we, we normally have that kind of a process. That will be more stringent. In this current year and twenty-three, twenty-four, and going forward, um, on there. That will help to some degree, it's not really gonna solve the problem. The, the, the fundamental is always uh, with these major projects, especially as we start ramping up. Major capital improvement projects, um, it has been my experience uniformly. Um, there's always an issue trying to get these invoices, you know, finance departments are usually, you know, they're, they're reading down public works. To say, hey, you know, listen, we need to get these invoices um, in there, because what happens is. If we don't, then it flows into the next year, which creates budget problems um, on there.
So do the invoices go to public works first, and then come to finance?
Invoices go, go to the department, uh, the departments then have to, you know, code their invoices, you know. According to their budgets and so forth. When it, when this information flows to finance, we're now looking at it, okay. Do you have your POs, your requisitions, do you have all your supporting documents? You have a budget for this, you know, we go through that process on every transaction. Um, on there, okay, so now we can go ahead and prove this for people. And then at that point, it flows into whatever the warrant cycle that, that it naturally is gonna fall into. Um, with that, so um, and and that, we've really have. Drastically improved the efficiency, so one of the things we did, we, we switched from. What was in the past, a very manual process, now we have what we call workflow, electronic workflow, within our financial system. So it's, it's much, it's very much out of me, from that standpoint. But the fundamental problem is always going to be, especially on large construction. Getting those invoices.
Can I just interject here? I worked for ten years for a construction company. We did public works. We did the Reagan Library. We've done all that work. I was a CFO, I made damn sure, we got our invoices.
Oh, I I agree with you.
And I think every other company does the same thing. So that's why I, I, I have a hard part. Hard time understanding, appreciating what you're saying, from my own experience.
Sure, and and this has been my experience, that it's, it's been fairly uniform.
So I, I think the bigger issue, since going back, is that.
But I do understand.
The resource in public works, I mean, it did, is there a need for a contract management person? To can, is on top of all of it, that because you're going to have, if you have a hundred and four million dollar budget. You're looking at the next five years, that's a lot. Uh, and to me, making sure that's actually happening, and then it's happening on AP's side, so that. You know, the finances can't be dependent on, on public works department if they're struggling. Right, so like, understanding again, the interconnection between these departments. So that's what I'm looking at, is that, if somebody had sent in a public comment, I can't remember. The, the name on the email, but um, and then asking about that, so bringing that back up, and saying this is something to consider as part of the budget process. Of you need to be considering a position for contract management, that can also address the AP side. Because again, I think at the mid-year, there were invoices found indoors. Speaks to larger operational question, I think, for me, whenever I talk of finances reporting, it's all about what are the operational decisions that we need to be making? Weaknesses or strengths that we're seeing.
I can also offer, in addition to looking at, we have centralized contract management, so we have a system as well as the grants. Um, we're also looking at, and we've already started some conversations with John, is, does it make sense? Because in other agencies, you also see a much more centralized processing. Where finance then receives, is the one point of contact receives all the invoices, and sends it out to the department, so I've seen that process work very well. It would um, very likely translate to needing an extra body in finance to be able, and then internal protocols. But that is something internally that we're looking at as a process improvement, so you're right on.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think I was a little horrified last.
I can give you an example, and it's not just public works, but there's one entity that just gave us three years worth of invoices, it's not a substantial amount. The three years worth of invoices, because they were just sending it to an old email account, and finally followed up on it, and so they three years worth of invoices. That's finally to, right, so I mean. It's not a significant one, um, but it's just, it gives you an example of like, this is something that continues, and they don't have the best follow-up, and we don't know, because we're not. Looking at old emails, so it would be helpful if there's one point of contact where everybody needs to go to AP at southmassachusettsca dot com. Within a certain number of time.
And the decentralized, and the decentralized finance, that that was ridiculous, it should never have happened. And so I think that, you know, they're cleaning up, and they're understanding, completely cleaning up and thinking, okay, how do we? You know, not just put the wheels back on, but actually like make a better, make a, make a better bus, right, so that's the whole point. Because it's, I think when you say we, I think you mean from a different city. They're like, this is what we normally do, like now.
For example, uh. City of Pasadena had a huge nightmare problem. So if you look back at those, Pasadena Star News in like twenty fifteen, you'll see pictures of uh. Little ladies with signs saying, I haven't been paid in months, on the front page. And so one of the things there, um, there was a team I put together. We, we, and it was very controversial at the time, we said we will no, we will no longer accept an invoice from a department. Has to flow through a portal, and the old, and and until it goes to the portal. That's the first time that we will recognize it as an obligation. And because, again, you know, the invoice is sitting in desk drawers and things like that, it was very controversial at the time. Um, but that was the only way uh, to really get a handle. On the volume of uh, invoices that were flowing through the end. And that was about seventy-two thousand invoices per year, so a very sizable volume of activity. Um, to do that here, it's all a resource issue.
And I think that the idea, exactly, the idea is, if you have a centralized. Portal even, and email, so it doesn't get lost to somebody's email, who then, people can use for all sorts of reasons. And then you have a system in place, exactly, we're talking about putting resources in the system.
It turned out, it was a very effective process, um, and they're, they're still using it to this day.
Any other comments, questions, or anything? The, the next, the next discussions.
Changes.
With the, with the changes? Okay. Need a motion?
Uh, roll call, Chair.
Yes.
Vice Chair Rossi? Commissioner Elsner? Commissioner Finley?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you for keeping us on track there, Stephanie, appreciate it. Uh, Jen?
Yeah, I just wanna say, wow, um, this was an amazing meeting, I mean, great, great. Great report from the subcommittee, great new subcommittee being formed, great discussion. Great input from staff, we've got new people that fire needs to go somewhere. But seriously, I, I mean, this is, I think this is really great. Where you're really making a big impact on this city, and I just wanna tell you. And I think it is evolving. Um, and it's evolving because it started from a point where, you know, we. We were behind the eight block for several years, but anyway, thank you, thank you.
Sitting up on the. Yeah, it really is. If you forget to turn on your bike, it's even worse. So, um, any other comments, and we'll just go around the horn here, okay, that's okay.
Uh, yeah, thanks to Shiva and Brad, I am looking forward to, you know, reading the report and following the news, I appreciate all the time. Because that, that's kind of a big project, and we let's look back and, you know, analyzing it, reading all that stuff, digesting it.
Fred?
So, thank you to Fred for working on this project, and I second, Jen said, I'm really happy to see. The direction that the commission's taking, and the staff's taking, working collaboratively together to, just in restructuring, with, this is restructuring. Something that was a little bit broken with London, and so it's taking time, but I'm happy to see us working together and getting engaged. And I hear that Fred, this would be.
Uh, before you go there, John, any comments?
No, um. No, not really.
Thank you for your, for the report, thank you for, for discussing, John, Tom? Thank you very much, and uh, I do have some sad news, uh, Fred, this is Fred's last official meeting. He is terming off after this one, but he has agreed to come back and help us with the discussion. At the next meeting around the insurance and the research that he did, so he will be with us one more meeting. But uh, that leaves a vacancy in our uh, uh, commission. So commissioners, please go out there and recruit, you know what this party's all about, please, okay? So we want you to be in uh, recruiting uh, possible candidates. And Janet, you need to go back to the city council and tell them that we need uh, one more person.
I will do that, I will do that.
And then the next meeting, we need to vote on uh, the chair role and the vice chair role for the next year. So we'll do that in January. Yeah, well, I'm trying to, I'm trying to. So we will do that at the uh next meeting. Uh, questions? I I just uh am thrilled that we're moving in the direction where we are, I feel like we're making progress. I feel like we're answering questions, I think we're asking the right questions too. Um, sometimes uh the temptation is just to let things lie, tell the city council, we will not do that. And we're gonna come to them, come for them, and uh we expect to be in in that information. Thank you very much. So, is that anything?
As the whole new year rolls, I think Janet hopefully will still be our liaison.
Oh, we need to for another year.
Um, I I, yeah, I mean, I I I think, I think it will depend that the the um, there'll be a new mayor and mayor pro tem elected. At the December twentieth meeting.
Yes.
I believe there's gonna be some little reception or something. Um, if anybody's. December twenty. The twentieth, the second meeting. Party at the city, the uh, the city staff are organizing this.
You should receive our press release on the reorganization, because we are doing a reception and kind of a schmingley. Um, celebrating. Celebrating the uh mayor and mayor pro tem on their service and then welcoming the new mayor and mayor pro tem that we selected that evening.
Perfect, and then the the mayor or the mayor will identify the person.
Mayor will be identifying, that's typically what happens.
January, yes, we plan to make a commission, a vacant commission appointment in January, so the city clerk's team is already. Flying the flyer and letting folks know in the community that they're accepting applications for the number of vacancies that we're terming out.
In fantasy football, I get to pick my own players, okay, we'd like to pick Janet, she'll be our president.
You're very behind. Yes, so I think over the mayor, the new mayor will be um, will, yes, will also, will also make the liaison assignments.
Perfect.
So the mayor makes liaison assignments and then also the mayor um and commissioner, the commission appointment made by the council, but yes. The the mayor kind of chooses the candidate.
It is nine-thirty. Adjourn.
Thank you.
Thank you all so much.